Hello. Good morning. Good morning, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting to order, please, and ask that we could call the roll, please. Thanks, Vanessa.
Commissioner Aguirre.
Presente.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Here.
Commissioner Cummings.
Here.
Commissioner Ecklerly.
Here.
Commissioner Escalante.
Here.
Commissioner Conkle.
Here.
Commissioner Lowenberg.
Here.
Commissioner Newsom.
Here.
Commissioner Uranga.
Present.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Here.
Chair Hart.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you.
Oh, Katie.
We missed someone. Here.
Thank you.
It's that long, long distance. Hi. Okay, thank you very much. We'll now turn to virtual meeting procedures. Chris?
Good morning. This Coastal Commission meeting is occurring both in person and through Zoom. This meeting is also being webcast and can be viewed online at cal-span.org. If you have access to the Internet and wish to watch or listen to the meeting only and not speak on an item, we recommend you use the Cal-Span website. Those who wish to address the Commission today can do so in person through the Zoom platform or by phone. The speaker request forms may be found on the Commission's webpage. Paper forms and a scannable QR code for paperless submittal are available on the Commission's staff table just outside the meeting room. For those on Zoom, we have posted virtual hearing procedures on the Commission's Agenda webpage, which is a guide on providing comments via Zoom or by phone. Members of the public during speaking during general public comment may be given up to two minutes to speak at the discretion of the chair. Requests to speak during the general public comment period will not be accepted after 9:00 a.m. on each day of the meeting. In order to provide the opportunity for the broadest range of public participation, you may speak on a specific topic one time only each month. Those speaking on an agenda item that is not general public comment are typically allowed two to three minutes to speak at the discretion of the chair. We will accept a request to speak on an item until the chair opens the hearing on that particular item. If you have access to the Internet, please go to the Commission's webpage and click on the link to fill out a speaker request. If you do not have Internet access or prefer to testify by phone, please call the Commission staff at (562) 477-9089. Again, that number is (562) 477-9089. Staff will provide you with the telephone call-in number and instructions for how to participate and provide testimony by phone. We will manage speakers coming in and out of the meeting through a meeting organizer. When it is your time to address the Commission, the organizer will invite you to turn on your video and microphone or provide instructions on how to unmute the phone. Madam Chair, that concludes the virtual hearing procedures.
Thanks very much, Chris. Before we go to agenda changes, I just want to acknowledge that we are meeting on the traditional lands of the Kumeyaay people who inhabited the San Diego area and particularly Mission Bay over 10,000 years. I wanted to also just call out with regard to that a couple of projects of note that are going on here with regard to the Kumeyaay. The Mission Bay Gateway Plan includes a proposal to create a cultural center with a recreated Indian village. And I think even more interesting is the Rewilding Mission Bay Project, which aims to restore a portion of the original wetland in Mission Bay and revitalize historic Native American lands. So thank you for allowing me to make that comment. And we'll now turn to agenda changes. Mr. Schwing.
Good morning, Chair Hart, and to the Commission and to everybody who's joining us today. The agenda changes sheet that was posted to the Commission's website remains accurate with one minor adjustment that I'll start with, and that relates to Item 6E. That item is going to be trailed to follow Item 9, but staff is also recommending that item be moved to consent. The item needs to be trailed here in case it comes off the consent calendar, in which case it would immediately follow the consent items. Next, Item 12C, that is postponed. That's the Ava Equities Application. Item 12D, that's Application 524199, the Coring Family Trust in San Clemente. That's moved to consent. Item 13A, that's Permit Amendment 5191296A1. This is the City of Newport Beach's RGP 54 Amendment. That's moved to consent. Item 13B, that's Application 5152056A1. This is the City of San Clemente's Sand Compatibility and Opportunistic Use Program Permit, their SCOOP permit. That's moved to consent. Item 13.5A, which is the Consistency Certification Companion to Item 13A, is also moved to consent. Item 15A, the City of Encinitas LCP Amendment, their Safety Element Update. This is just the LCP time extension. That's moved to consent. Item 15B, the City of Del Mar's LCP Amendment on their central commercial and public facilities land use and zone. That's again just an LCP time extension. That's moved to consent. Item 17A, that's Permit Number 60019082, the City of San Diego's Environmental Monitoring and Technical Services Facility. That's moved to consent. And last, Item 17B, Permit Number 6530A1 Sherwood and 3CA Grizzly from Encinitas. That is postponed. And that concludes the agenda changes.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, we'll now move on to general public comment, Item 4. Ask how many folks we have that would like to speak today?
Give me a second. We have 15 people.
Okay. And how many here in the room? I'd like to start with them, please.
We have nine in the room.
All right, so we have nine people that are speaking here today. Chris, we'll call out your name, and if you would come up to the microphone, you'll have two minutes. And also, please just be prepared, if you're the next name called, to come up as the person before you completes their comments. Thank you.
Okay. For members of the public, I'll be announcing the names of the upcoming speakers and invite you to speak when it is your turn. Each speaker will be allowed two minutes to speak during general public comment. In order to allow for live video testimony on Zoom, we will be bringing you in as panelists. As we bring you in, your Zoom will reload. This may take a moment. To speed up this process, we will bring several people in at a time, but please remain muted and keep your video off until we ask you to speak. After your time is up, you'll be moved back to attendee mode. For members of the public present in the room, I'll call your names in the order that they appear on our signup list. When you hear your name, please line up behind the podium and announce yourself with your name when you approach to speak. Several helpful tips. There is a raise-your-hand function that will help us find you in the attendee list. If you are using a phone for audio, you can raise your hand by dialing star 9. If you are participating by Zoom, you should see a button on your Zoom screen. If you have signed up to speak for this item and are able to do so, please raise your hand now. When it is your time to speak, we will invite you to unmute and turn on your camera. You can unmute yourself on a phone by dialing star 6. And please remember to state your name for the record. So starting with people in the room, we have Amanda Gonzalez, followed by Mark Stevens, Bill Rogers, and Bob Piskiel. Amanda Gonzalez.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Amanda Gonzalez, and I'm an Associate Principal with Merkel &amp; Associates. We serve as the environmental consultant for the San Diego Bay Fair event. I'm here today with Mr. Bob Davies to provide the preliminary results of-
Can you pause one minute? Can everyone hear? No. Okay, because I think we're so far away and it's hard to see you, although you're in the screen, so that's good. So you really need to speak clearly into the mic. Okay, thank you.
I'm here today with Mr. Bob Davies to provide the preliminary results of avian monitoring conducted this year at the request of the Commission due to public concern raised over the event, including impacts to nesting birds. The San Diego Bay Fair is a three-day beach festival and powerboat racing competition hosted within the Fiesta Bay Basin of Mission Bay. The event celebrated its 60th anniversary this year and is typically held the second weekend after Labor Day weekend. This year's event occurred on September 13th through the 15th, which generally corresponds to the end of the regulatory period of the nesting bird season. As requested, we conducted avian monitoring results on Saturday, events on Saturday, August 31st, Labor Day weekend, September 7th, and September 14th. Monitoring occurred from the same locations and during a four-hour time period during each monitoring event. The avian results of the surveys on the 14th are: No California lease terns were observed. This is consistent with our surveys leading up to the Bay Fair event. No elegant terns or black skimmers were detected. Approximately 59 royal terns were observed, but they were in their winter plumage, which is consistent with non-breeding behavior. The average number of vessels that passed by West Ski Island during the event significantly decreased during the Bay Fair event. There were 234 vessels per hour on August 31st. There were 264 vessels per hour on September 7th and approximately 72 vessels all day on the event. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mark Stevens, Bill Rogers, Bob Piskiel, and Janet Rogers. And I believe you have a shared presentation.
Yes. Good morning. My name is Mark Stevens, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Downtown San Diego and Barcadero Coalition. We are raising three main points related to the San Diego Unified Port District's Port Master Plan update in advance of your formal consideration of this item. One, it violates some Coastal Act provisions as currently proposed. Two, the Recreation Open Space Designation violates Public Resources Code Section 30711. Three, a recommended scavenger hunt on the Embarcadero, which will be explained by a later presenter in our group. Our bottom line is, where is our world-class waterfront? Next slide, please. Okay. The proposed Port Master Plan update will apply throughout the Port of San Diego's jurisdiction and proposes new land uses, definitions, standards, and policies that represent a complete overhaul of the current Port Master Plan. It describes the Port Master Plan update as a comprehensive and inclusive integrated planning initiative. Next slide, please. Touching on a few examples of potential Coastal Act violations, I'd like to share that much more detail is provided in a previously submitted letter from the Chatten Brown Law Group dated September 19th, 2024, which your staff should have. Next slide, please. The Port Master Plan update omits several known proposed uses and withholds necessary detail and information in violation of Public Resources Code Section 30711. The Port Master Plan update must include proposed uses in land and water areas where known to comply with the Coastal Act. National City and Chula Vista Bayfronts are the large red rectangular areas that are omitted from the Port Master Plan update along with the Pond 20 area. Forty-six percent of the Port District's jurisdiction is excluded from the comprehensive plan. Omission of an entire planning district is contrary to Coastal Act principles. The small square is the Central Embarcadero area. Next slide, please. The report states that the Master Plan update does not propose any new uses, development, or changes in intensity development in a central Embarcadero. However, the proposed Seaport San Diego project involves about a third of the Embarcadero Planning District in downtown San Diego, and its omission from the update prevents an accurate understanding of its impacts, including its vision. The port and project applicant have been planning for Seaport San Diego project since 2016, and the current proposal would add more commercial square footage than the total square footage of the entire San Diego Convention Center, a massive structure extending over five full blocks and impeding public waterfront access and views. That is, the convention center- Just to conclude then, the port's lopsided focus on luxury hotels and privatization fails to align with the port's policies and violates public trust doctrine. And how will the Commission regain public trust if it approves this with such questionable claims? Next slide, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Bill Rogers, Bob Piskiel, and Janet Rogers.
Good morning. I'm Bill Rogers. The port must correctly identify activities as either public or commercial recreation. Bundling all public recreation categories under Recreation Open Space, ROS, violates the public trust doctrine. Next slide, please. Under the current master plan, public recreation and access for environmental justice includes unleased property where user fees are not involved, like public parks, promenades, fishing, piers. Commercial recreation includes areas leased by private or public investors with a user fee, such as sports fishing, golf courses, restaurants, hotels, and marinas. Next slide, please. The PMPU improperly combines commercial uses with public space uses, eliminating sufficient detail in violation of Section 30711 of the Coastal Act and the public trust doctrine. ROS eliminates specific designations that ensure public space and unfettered public access and provides ways for commercial uses to dominate the entire port jurisdiction. A proposed top golf facility charging $75 per hour per bay serves a private commercial function that not everyone can afford and is a perfect example of hiding commercial activity under the rubric of Recreation Open Space. ROS impedes coastal access and prevents the Coastal Commission from determining the PMPU's compliance with the Act. Next slide. Promenades and parks and plazas should be reported separately. Playing in a park is not the same as a walk on concrete. The PMPU combines all three into an amorphous ROS designation that gives the port far too much leeway to convert parks to concrete walkways and public spaces into commercial uses. Roco Park is more than a walkway, and the Seaport project plans to eliminate it. Thank you. Next slide for our next speaker, please.
Thank you. Next, Bob Piskiel and Janet Rogers.
Hello. My name is Bob Piskiel. Between massive hotel developments and dumping commercial enterprises into public activities, the port's vision is to privatize, monotonize, and public land and water. Please stop them from letting them do that. Where is our world-class waterfront? Next slide. Look at the proof. The current master plan has bought the commercial and public recreation around 400 acres because golf in a public recreation, where it is moved commercial, is 500 acres, and public recreation is only 300 acres. Of course, that looks bad. Notice, parks and plazas are separate from promenade notice in the detailed categories. Notice, land use is 2,777 acres. Next slide. There isn't enough detail in the PMPU to accept the plan. The detailed categories are gone. This allows the port to hide commercial recreation and public use under ROS, land use down to 1,776 acres, and the water uses are down 950 acres. Forty percent of the port district is missing. Next slide. It is imperative that the PMPU be comprehensive and remedy these concerns. Certification of the port's proposed master plan in part would not remedy these violations. Therefore, the Commission should reject the PMPU in whole. There is no comprehensive plan. Why do they keep saying things that aren't true? Next slide.
Okay, our last speaker for this group is Janet Rogers, and then we'll follow with Yahudi Gaffin, Susie Whitelaw, and then Pamela Heatherington.
Thank you. We're one slide behind, please. Okay, thank you. I'm Janet Rogers, co-chair of the Embarcadero Coalition. Most of you are not from San Diego. We want you to see and feel what the Coastal Commission has already approved and what the port wants you to do. You make the final decision, so you need to have firsthand knowledge of the area. Please do our three-part scavenger hunt this time or next June. Please try to find the scenic views, view corridors, and public spaces in the Embarcadero. It's hard to do. We're happy to go with you. Next slide. Please understand our planning district and the cumulative impact of your decisions. I sent these maps. This map shows the current development and all the additions to hotel rooms and boat berths. The port wants a Las Vegas-style hotel strip and one big marina. Next slide. Getting to the water in the South Embarcadero is almost impossible due to the convention center. Next slide. Next is the Central Embarcadero, which the port says nothing is happening, but the huge Seaport project is planned. Next slide. Last in the scavenger hunt is the North Embarcadero. See the location of the New Freedom Park. It only took 20 years of waiting and the Commission threatening to sue the port. For every section in this vision, is this your vision of a world-class waterfront? Next slide. Please go to the portside pier for dinner. You have a coupon, a free coupon for appetizers from the general manager. Remember, a grand jury was formed when a port commissioner said they could do whatever they wanted. The upper deck yellow area on the diagram was supposed to be public access with 108 seats. Instead, the Catch Grill Restaurant is there. An additional unpermitted restaurant is in the glass dome. The port took our public access and created an additional restaurant. How do you feel about that? Next slide. The port's plan maximizes revenue, not public access. Please don't certify the PMPU. Send it back. Send it back to create a world-class waterfront. We need the Coastal Commission to enforce the Coastal Act. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Yahudi Gaffin, Susie Whitelaw, Pamela Heatherington, and George Heatherington.
Good morning, members of the Commission staff. My name is Yahudi Gaffin, better known as Gaff. I'm the CEO of One Highway One. We are the developer who was selected by the Port of San Diego almost seven years ago to help with the replanning of the Central Embarcadero. Our project is known as Seaport San Diego. I'm speaking today to give you a quick update on the project. Since our selection, the project's gone through various iterations as a result of feedback from the Board of Port Commissioners and other stakeholders. Most recently, on September 2023, the port as the lead agency released the notice of preparation for the EIR and held a public scoping meeting, actually, two meetings. Based on the feedback received through the scoping process, we made some additional modifications to the project, including pulling back some of the waterside development to the existing pier headline. Environmental review is underway. The port anticipates that the draft EIR will be completed in fall of 2025 and the final EIR in mid-2026. The Seaport San Diego team has been actively engaging in community outreach, including importantly, in historically underserved communities around the whole of the county of San Diego. This past June, we held a Parks for All event at Embarcadero Marina Park with family-friendly activities and an opportunity for people to talk with our landscape designers about Seaport San Diego parks and open space. This work was focused on creating a seaport for all, not only for downtown residents. We also appreciate the comments provided by the Coastal Commission staff through the scoping process and will continue to work on addressing these concerns. This will be reflected in the draft EIR when it's released to the public in fall of next year. We look forward to continuing to work collaboratively with the port, other responsible agencies, and all community stakeholders as this project moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Susie Whitelaw, Pamela Heatherington, and George Heatherington. And then we'll move on to people on Zoom.
Hi, I'm Dr. Susie Whitelaw with Saver Beach of San Clemente. The beaches of Southern San Clemente have been seriously eroded due to the lack of natural sand supply. Like many other beaches in California, what sets our beach apart from others is the presence of the railroad track right on the beach. Next slide. Because what happens when the beach gets too narrow, the railroad just dumps rocks on the beach in a misguided effort to protect their tracks. You're looking at 30,000 tons of rock or a portion of that that they've placed already on our beaches. Next slide. This beach lies between two very important state parks, San Clemente and San Onofre, and the beach used to allow lateral public access between the two parks, walking along the sand. We request that OCTA be asked to restore this public access that represents an important component of our California coastal trail. Next slide, please. Here's our plan to get around OCTA's rocks and restore public access. Number one, starting from the north, the left side of the screen, OCTA should maintain a wide sandy beach between San Clemente State Beach and this pedestrian underpass. We've calculated the cost to be about $40 million over the next 20 years. Number two, from the underpass south to San Onofre, build a simple pedestrian path on the east side of the railroad down to San Onofre. OCTA has been negotiating this mitigation for three years now after they finished the project, and we understand that they now want to delay it indefinitely. The longer they delay, the more damage is done to this beach, and this disruption for the public access continues. People are now walking on the tracks to get down to San Onofre State Beach, and that's really very dangerous. We need to establish a trail next to the tracks. We have a really rare opportunity this winter. The dredger is going to be there for a couple of months with nothing to do. OCTA could put 200,000 to 400,000 cubic yards of sand on that beach this winter. We ask you respectfully that you have OCTA make the first payment on this debt as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Pamela Heatherington, George Heatherington, and then our first three speakers on Zoom will be Jeremy Frankel, Gary Walsh, and Patricia McPherson.
Okay. I've got six slides on Princess Street. Good morning. I'm George Heatherington in place of Pam Heatherington. I'm the board chair of the Environmental Center of San Diego, and we have accepted an OTD offer to dedicate from the Coastal Commission for the coastal trail access at Princess Street in La Jolla. And we just want to update you on what our progress has been over the last six years. It's been a long, hard fight. Next slide, please. We've done a variety of studies that may be hard to read there in small print, but that's a list of all the, we've crossed all the Ts and dotted the Is. Next slide, please. We have a master plan title sheet right here for you, and I know that this is just for information to keep because I know it can't be read by most of the audience here, but we are steadily working ahead and are currently waiting for discretionary permits from the city. And at that point, having been accepted, we will be entering the construction phase. So, next slide, please. We have a picture here from Coast Walk looking toward the entrance at the bottom of the trail where we propose probably a ship's ladder. We're still in design on this. That may be just a handrail or so to make the last five feet from the bottom of the trail down to the actual beachfront itself on the Madalaua Beach Preserve, Marine Preserve there. Next slide, please. This is a view from Coast Walk in La Jolla, looking north along that coast in that very special little cove right there that public access will be restored to through this project. Next slide, please. This is low-tide picture taken by one of our staff as well, right there on the spot that shows the spot that we are accessing. Thank you.
Thank you. Now moving to our Zoom speakers, Jeremy Frankel, Gary Walsh, and then Patricia McPherson. Jeremy Frankel, are you being promoted and as a panelist? And when you're able to, please unmute yourself and state your name for the record.
Morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Jeremy Frankel. I'm appearing on behalf of the Environmental Defense Center, Santa Barbara-based nonprofit. My comment today concerns the Coastal Commission's recent actions in Santa Barbara County with respect to Sable Offshore Corps. Earlier this year, Sable acquired the San Yenets Oil Production Unit and its attendant infrastructure. These facilities caused a catastrophic oil spill at Refugio State Beach in 2015 and in the years since have aged past their expected lifespan. in the years since have aged past their expected lifespan. Sable intends to restart them by the end of this year. In early September, Santa Barbara County improperly abdicated its responsibility to oversee extensive repair work that this company is conducting on its onshore pipelines, the same pipelines that ruptured in 2015. Since then, we have personally observed Sable doing extensive excavations along the Gaviota Coast without any regulatory oversight. We've been very concerned that Sable's work, which constitutes development, is harming environmentally sensitive habitats, wetlands, and streams, and cultural resources. We want to thank Coastal Commission staff for stepping in to fill the jurisdictional void left by the county and for the urgency in which they've addressed this issue. Specifically, we want to thank the commission for holding Sable accountable by issuing a notice of violation and, after Sable continued its unpermitted work, laying the groundwork for a possible cease and desist. So again, we sincerely appreciate the commission's enforcement of the Coastal Act in our county, and we look forward to the restoration of damaged habitats. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Gary Walsh and Patricia McPherson, and then I'll call a couple names that we aren't able to find. Gary Walsh.
Hello. I don't know if my video is working or not. Let me, okay. Anyways, I'll start. First, I'd like to thank all of the California Coastal Commission members for dedicating your time and attention to the protection of the most valuable resource California has, its wonderful coast. My organization, Save Our Beaches SC, has been before this commission multiple times over the past few years, and during this time, we've presented how the beaches of San Clemente are threatened with extinction. Often overlooked with this threat is the actual extinction, a part of the California Coastal Trail, as you may have heard from an earlier presentation by Susie Whitelaw. When the Orange County Transportation Agency was allowed to place thousands of tons of rocks to stabilize their tracks three years ago, they effectively cut off a portion of the California Coastal Trail. During these three years, we have repeatedly presented plans for a workaround to their blockade. Those have kind of fallen on deaf ears. As you heard earlier, they wanted to forget about doing anything about this. Now, OCTA has mentioned that they want to cut off another mile of this trail by using their same proven technique, the placement of more rock. This time, they hope to use a sleight of hand to fool the commission by indicating they will be including sand with this rock, as if they're some kind of steward of the beach due to fully placing sand. But the devil is in the detail, and their plan does not pass the smell test, and the commission must not be fooled by their slick talking presentations. A two-minute comment is not enough time to present the details of the Trojan horse that OCTA wants its commission to approve. I'm asking you to direct staff to meet with us, Save Our Beaches, and present back to you a publicly presented detailed analysis of what OCTA is proposing. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And then Patricia McPherson. Patricia, I see that you're unmuted. Then I just asked you to start your video. There you go. We can't hear you. I see that you're unmuted, but we aren't hearing you. Could you try without the headset, maybe? We still can't hear you. Give us a second. And while we're figuring this out, the other names that we weren't able to see are Barry Casely and Dan Stedjink. If either of you are in the hearing, please raise your hand. All right, Patricia, I'm going to actually bump you back to attendee mode and then see if we can unmute you there. Give us a second. And then I've asked you to unmute. You should be able to. I see that you're unmuted. Unfortunately, we aren't able to hear you. And I'm seeing no other hands raised. Madam Chair, should we proceed or wait?
Okay. So how would you, how do you?
We can't get audio from this person.
Okay.
And that's our last speaker for general public comment.
All right. So what I would recommend to the public speaker that we were unable to hear is we would welcome, if you would, we have public comment each day of our hearing, so if you could return tomorrow or Friday, that would be great, and we'll look forward to hearing from you then. All right, so we're going to close public comment at this time, and we're going to move on to Item 6A, the Executive Director's Report. Director Hucklebridge is not here right now. You know what we might do in that case? Do you want to do the ledge report? Are we prepared for that?
I'm here, Madam Chair.
Okay, why don't we move forward with the ledge report, and we'll come back to the Executive Director's Report? Oh, I am so sorry. Actually, you know what we're going to do? We're going to return back to Item Four and ask if there are any commissioner comments. Commissioner Geary.
Thank you. I'd just like to ask staff if we can have an update on when we expect the PMP to come back to us, and also if there's, maybe you can comment on some of the enforcement concerns that were raised as well. Well, unpermitted concerns. I don't know if there's enforcement actions, simply.
Thank you. So the port has submitted their port master plan update to the commission, but it is currently incomplete, so we are waiting on a response from the port to that list of items. I think it may take some time for them to do so. We don't, so we don't have a timeline at this point for when that will come in front of the commission.
Okay, understood. So we're waiting on their response to our comments.
Yes.
And about the unpermitted concerns that were raised, do you know anything about that?
So we are looking into that. We have had some contact with the port about it. The port is going to be looking into it as well. We're at this point awaiting their response.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments or questions? I mean, I will, and our executive director is back. I don't have a question regarding OCTA, but this is an ongoing concern of the commission. My understanding is that there has still not been a request for an emergency permit. Has anything changed?
No, nothing has changed right now. We are, I think I'm concerned about the potential, depending on what type of storm season we have this winter. There would be, if we have another bad storm season, there's always a potential for more requests for emergency permits. We are also aware of the project that's going on, that the Corps is working on to do sand placement nearby, and so we have been working closely with the Corps, with OCTA, trying to figure out if there is a way, sort of as was mentioned in public comment, to take advantage of the fact that the dredge is in the vicinity to fast-track some type of sand placement to address both public access concerns and provide some protection for existing rail as well. So we're working on that, and we'll, as soon as we have more to update you, we will definitely do that. It's challenging on the Corps permitting side, but they're, but we're working with them and trying to come up with a pathway.
Okay, so we'll potentially hear more at our next hearing.
I don't, I'm not sure. Possibly, if we have something to share, we will, for sure.
All right. Coach, thank you very much. All right, so Director Hucklebridge, we're going to turn to Item 6A, the Executive Director's Report.
All right. Let me get up my notes here. All right, thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, everybody, commissioners, members of the public. My published Executive Director Report can be found on the commission's website, but I will spend a few minutes going over several of the items. First of all, a huge thank you to everyone that participated in Coastal Cleanup Day on Saturday, September 21. As you will remember, this year marked the 40th anniversary of this event, which serves as the state's largest annual volunteer event with over 750 cleanups in 57 of California's 58 counties. Results are still coming in from across the state, but as of right now, approximately 41,000 volunteers participated, removing over 315,000 pounds of trash and recyclables from the state's coastal and inland shorelines. We lead this event every year in partnership with hundreds of NGOs and local governments across the state, and we would like to give a huge shout-out to these incredibly important partners who make this cleanup such a success year after year. So next up, commission staff attended a number of events, conferences, and hearings this past month. I will mention each one briefly, but if you want more detail, please see my written report. First, there was a training event on vegetation mapping and sensitive natural communities along the North Coast. It was organized by the California Native Plant Society, California, and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, and was attended by the commission's senior ecologist, Dr. Lauren Garsky Garcia. The commission's coastal engineer, Jeremy Smith, joined an informational hearing held by the California Assembly Select Committee on Sea Level Rise and California Economy. Jeremy participated in a panel, along with representatives from the State Water Resources Control Board and the Department of Toxic Substances Control, to describe each agency's role in planning for sea level rise-induced groundwater rise, particularly the impacts of groundwater rise on contaminated sites in the coastal area. Aaron Preiler, statewide planning manager, participated in a panel discussion at the American Planners Association California Conference in Riverside this past month. The panel focused on perspectives on proactive planning for sea level rise and local coastal programs, and complying with SB 272, and gave Aaron a chance to highlight our work with local governments. Commission staff from our San Diego office attended a ribbon-cutting to celebrate the completion of the W-19 San Gito Lagoon Wetland Restoration Project. This project created and restored 84 acres of wetland habitat and constructed a new pedestrian trail in San Gito Lagoon, and was implemented by Caltrans, Sand Egg, and the San Gito River Park Joint Powers Authority as wetland mitigation for transportation infrastructure projects. Environmental Justice Unit Manager Javier Padilla Reyes attended a Core-to-Career Alumni Job Fair at the Los Angeles Trade and Technical College, sponsored by the American Climate Corps. This event gave us a chance to educate a diverse group of Climate Corps alumni interested in working on climate-related projects and programs about the commission's work and opportunities to join the commission staff team. And the commission staff from Santa Cruz Office attended the Capitola Wharf Grand reopening, a culmination of several decades-long vision to enhance the wharf's resiliency and implement a variety of public access improvements, including new restrooms, benches, and bike racks. The event featured Senator Laird and Senator, sorry, and State Coastal Conservancy Executive Officer Amy Hutzel as keynote speakers. So next, I'm pleased to announce that in July, the commission was recognized as a project contributor on a Federal Highway Administration Environmental Excellence Award to the Caltrans Fish Passage Program. This was led by partners at Caltrans, CDFW, NIMPs, and Cal Poly Humboldt. The award was in the category of accelerating project delivery. Transportation and technical staff at the commission have been working with Caltrans and partners on fish passage issues for many years now, including through representation on each of four coastal fish passage advisory councils, and in the permitting of dozens of fish passage-related projects. The award reflects the shared commitments to and the benefits of our inter-agency efforts to protect and enhance coastal resources while also serving the people of California. I would particularly like to recognize Peter Allen and our transportation team and our entire ecology team, Dr. Garsky Garcia, Dr. John Engel, Dr. Rachel Pausch, and Dr. Corey Clatterbuck for their work supporting fish passage projects and inter-agency coastal protection. I would also like to share with the commission that commission staff recently concluded the first year of our new staff mentoring program. This program was initiated and organized by a team of staff volunteers from across the agency and in response to staff requests and as an effort to further the commission's Jedi goals. The program was designed to welcome new staff into the commission, support staff development and cohesion, and create a way for veteran staff and recent retirees to share their knowledge with up-and-coming staff. The pilot session this past year had a tremendous response, with 56 people, or approximately 30% of the commission staff, taking part as either mentors or mentees. Participants gathered together on October 2 to celebrate their accomplishments and recommend improvements for the second session of the program, planned to start in February of next year. On a personal note, I participated in this program this past year, and it has truly been one of my favorite commission events that I've ever participated in. I would like to give a special shout-out to the folks that worked really hard to organize such a fantastic program, Alana Casey, Annie Frankel, Emery Dispenser, Javier Padilla, Tom Luster, and Galen Travis for their incredible work launching this program and making it such a huge success. Finally, Madam Chair, as the last item on my Executive Director's Report, I would like to turn it over to Mike Murray of NOAA's West Coast Office of National Marine Sanctuaries to provide a brief update on the status of the designation process for the Chumash Heritage National Marine Sanctuary as a follow-up to the commission's August 8, 2024 consideration and concurrence with the sanctuary designation and management plan. So with that, let's see if we can get Mike up on the Zoom.
All right. We have Mike Murray. He's in as a panelist, and you should, I see you on Zoom, and then we'll bring your presentation up.
Great, thank you. Good morning. Is my audio coming through?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you so much. And good morning, Chair Hart, commissioners, Executive Director Hucklebridge, and council staff. I am, as you just heard, Mike Murray. I serve as the Acting West Coast Regional Director for NOAA's Office of National Marine Sanctuaries, and yes, I was last with you on August 8, as was mentioned, and I'm so honored to be invited back to share a little bit of the Executive Director's Reporting Time and give you a quick update on designation of the Chumash Heritage National Marine Sanctuary. I just have a couple slides, and we can go straight to the next one, please. Yeah, so just first off, where are we at in the designation process? It is a long and winding road. It's been three years of effort, but we are at the very tail end now. It was September 6 that we released the final environmental impact statement, so just a month after I saw you last, and so that was a big milestone step. Under NEPA, NOAA is waiting 30 days before finalizing its decision-making. That 30-day mark was yesterday. So, the target, if all goes well with the Office of the Federal Register, we should see an announcement this Friday, October 11, for publication of the final rule. NOAA has signed Record of Decision, and I was well at releasing a final management plan to guide this future sanctuary. You would think we are done, but no, there's just a little bit more after that. Under the National Marine Sanctuaries Act, we must wait 45 days of congressional session to elapse. Sort of complicated when they count a day of congressional sessions, so we think it's going to run through maybe the last week of November or the first week of December. And that period is just there in case the governor wanted to express any final concerns. We're not expecting that, or if members of Congress had any inquiries. But nobody has to take any action during that time. It just needs to elapse as an opportunity. At that endpoint, then, we'll issue a short little notice that the sanctuary regulations have taken legal effect, and that will be the designation of the 17th National Marine Sanctuary. We're super excited about that. I can't thank you enough for all the supportive comments and encouragement when I was last with you in August. It means so much to us. But let's go on to the next slide to reveal, well, to show. There it is. That's the cover of the final EIS released in September. It's got all the same findings of impact and assessment as the draft that your staff reviewed, but it presents a little bit different of a final preferred boundary alternative, which I have coming up. And importantly, it's got a couple hundred pages of responses to public comments, of which there, we lumped them into about 492 summarized comments, so it's really, really important for us that we took the time to fully understand all of the ideas, comments, concerns, and questions that came in during the process. Over 100,000 people commented. So that's what's in the FEIS in a nutshell. But next slide, please. Next is where NOAA is landing. Next is where NOAA is lending with its final preferred alternative boundary, shown there in yellow. This will be a very large sanctuary, 4,543 square miles. It's 116 miles of coast. It'll be the third, it'll become the third largest in the National Marine Sanctuary system, which currently has 16 sites. This area was selected, first and foremost, so that it meets the purposes and policies for what a national marine sanctuary is supposed to be under the National Marine Sanctuaries Act. It's a manageable area. We can provide important regulatory protections to the habitats and species, and of course, we do everything at sanctuaries in cooperation and partnership with other authorities and stakeholders, and in this case, indigenous tribes and groups. This boundary is essentially what had been in the draft EIS as alternative four, with some modifications to kind of, you see some hard square, flat top and squared corners that was done for ease of understanding in and out of sanctuary domain awareness. So, but importantly, this, this space above the sanctuary is there because of NOAA's reconsideration of a bunch of information that came in about offshore wind development during the draft comment period. We learned more about what kind of room cable routing would need for spacing requirements, turning radios that can't be too sharp, the need for cables to cross other cables at close-to-right angles, and most importantly, unlike what we thought at the draft stage, the industry was very clear that they, they seek and will need future connection points, not just in Morro Bay, but in Diablo Canyon. So NOAA took that into consideration, and also, we all have to confront the reality that BOEM would usually issue a right-of-way for these types of offshore energy projects for the cable routes. They are not legally able to do that under federal law in a national marine sanctuary. So that created concerns of the industry and BOEM and others. The industry was uncomfortable, shall we say, with the unfamiliar sanctuary permitting process, which is not the same as BOEM's. And so taking all this into consideration, and NOAA took it seriously, that there are high-level administrative goals to develop offshore wind energy, but also to pursue conservation and work with tribes and indigenous peoples. So this represents a sort of pragmatic solution and compromise. We know that not everyone is thrilled about seeing the boundary right here, but it may not be the end of the story, and I'm going to say more about that in just a moment. If we go to the next slide, and I only have two more. One of the things you became aware of, and your, your staff did too, through doing some excellent tribal outreach, is the concerns about the name of the sanctuary, Chumash Heritage National Marine Sanctuary. Well, we did too have concerns about that name as it might have been applied to waters, say, north of Morro Rock. That's where you encounter traditional territories, not only of Chumash, but of Salinan peoples, and they didn't love the name, and we didn't want to create the impact of the name up in those waters of just calling it a Chumash Heritage National Marine Sanctuary. So we are still sticking with Chumash Heritage National Marine Sanctuary, but it's far more appropriate, given the boundary map that I just showed you. Doesn't mean everybody still loves the name. Names are sensitive, and everyone has different ideas for what the name could have been, might have been, but we're starting with this name. And I'll have more to say about the name in a moment, but I also want to just emphasize again, we have tried so hard to reach and meet with all the tribes, hear from all of them. We've had over 40 calls and meetings now. It has told us a lot about the complexity of the Central Coast indigenous environment, and we've learned a lot. And we've set the stage to invite everyone back together, have some meetings this winter, and then we'll start creating an advisory council and an indigenous cultures advisory panel and intergovernmental policy council and other elements of a co-stewardship structure to which we will invite people to get together and help manage this sanctuary in co-stewardship. So that's the plan. Lot of work ahead, bumpy road. Next, last slide is just to say that when I mentioned that maybe this isn't the end of the sanctuary planning, it's because really we're calling this Phase 1, and we say Phase 2 is really what we've written as a major new piece of the final management plan to be released this Friday, is something called a Boundary Adjustment Action Plan. It's where NOAA is committing between now and 2032 to keep evaluating the outlying waters, north, a little bit to the west, and even more, uh, Est, Morro Bay estuary, because they were considered. There's nothing wrong with those areas, they're fantastic. I mentioned the wind energy complications, but a second phase spread out on that kind of timeline would line up with our Mandarit Plan Review Process for this new sanctuary, and would allow a second look at whether or not those waters should be included within sanctuary protection. And importantly, that could be expanding this sanctuary in the future. It could be expanding the Monterey Bay Sanctuary southward. It could be somebody coming along, taking advantage of the open opportunity to nominate another sanctuary in the, in between waters, or could, we could find after full assessment, you know, this, this place could be managed just fine without more sanctuary protection. It's no guarantee yet, but the, the guarantee is that we have a process laid out in the management plan to take a second look. And I, and I say that with all due respect and understanding that there will be some disappointment around this first boundary, and so the emphasizing that second phase is really important in public messaging for us at this time. And that, that's what I have for some highlights. Thank you again for, the last slide is just to let you know that this is the website at which you can grab the final EIS and other goodies, and that this Friday, I expect, will be updated completely with all the new documents. So thank you for your time. Really appreciate the opportunity to address you again.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And we just had one other speaker on this, Adam Leverens.
Kedok.
Who should be in person?
Good morning, commissioners and staff. I had hoped to speak after the executive director's report on the Newport mooring rates. Is that possible?
Yeah, we're not at that item yet, so I'll call that. Is there anyone else on this item, executive director's report?
Uh, no.
Okay.
No other speakers.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, I just wanted to express the commission's gratitude to you, Mr. Murray, for all your incredible work. It was a great presentation. Personally, I think three years is quick, anytime in government. That's just, I guess I'm a jaded perspective at this point. Director Hucklebridge, does that complete your report?
Yes, it does. I'm available for any questions.
Okay, great. I'll open it for public comment, ask if there are any speakers.
Uh, no, no speakers.
All right, come back to the commission. Any questions? All right, seeing none in that case, we'll move on to item 6C, the legislative report. It'll be Mr. Drake, I believe.
Good morning, Chair Hart and commissioners. This is the legislative report for October. This will be the final legislative report for the year. Last month, Sarah Christie covered several pieces of priority legislation that had already been signed by the governor at that time. In this report, we'll be covering the outcomes for the remaining priority bills that were signed or vetoed in final weeks before the October 1st signature deadline. The majority of the bills staff has been tracking that passed out of the legislature were signed by the governor. In addition to the bills staff reported on last month, there are a few bills we want to highlight, commission and the public. First is a trio of bills by Senator Catherine Blakespear that were all signed by the governor, beginning with SB 689. The commission took a support position on that bill earlier this year. It adds a new section to the Coastal Act that streamlines the process for the commission to approve CDPs and LCP amendments for new bike lanes, transit lanes, and pedestrian walkways. The governor also signed Senator Blakespear's bill SB 1077, which directs the commission to coordinate with HCD to create updated guidance for local governments on how to amend their LCPs to promote accessory dwelling units. A third Blakespear bill signed by the governor was SB 1098, which will establish multiple working groups to do critical resiliency planning for the Low-Son Rail Corridor. Shifting gears, last month, Sarah Christie walked through some last-minute amendments that had been made to SB 951 by Senator Weiner, which the commission had a neutral position on. You'll recall that the legislature had removed the main piece of that bill, which would require LCPs to be updated on the same schedule as housing elements, and put that language into another bill, AB 3093 by Assembly Member Ward. Ultimately, the governor signed both bills, so the requirement for local governments to amend their LCPs when they update their housing elements was enacted as part of AB 3093. And then the remaining piece of SB 951 clarifies that the city and county of San Francisco will be treated as a city for the purpose of local CDP appeals. A few other quick updates on bills that don't amend the Coastal Act but are relevant to the commission. First, staff is pleased to report that the governor signed AB 2939 by Speaker Emeritus Anthony Brendan, which the commission supported. That bill facilitates nonprofit access to local parks and beaches by directing local governments to regulate access by small nonprofit and tribal groups to locally manage public lands in the same way that they regulate general public use. The bill does include sideboards that allow local governments to still specially regulate group access in certain situations, such as where it's necessary to protect natural resources. Continuing on the topic of public lands, the governor also signed AB 1284 by Assembly Member Ramos. This bill contains several provisions, all of which are intended to promote co-management and co-governance agreements with tribes for state lands. Another recently signed bill is AB 2387 by Assembly Member Pelron. This bill allows mobile home parks throughout the state to increase their number of lots by 10% without needing to obtain a discretionary permit, including in the coastal zone, a CDP. The bill does exclude certain environmentally sensitive areas, including in the coastal zone, those lands that are within the commission's geographic appeals jurisdiction, which includes areas between the first public road in the sea, within 300 feet of any beach or bluff edge, within 100 feet of a wetland, and on state tidelands. These exclusions are modeled after several other recent pieces of housing streamlining legislation. Lastly, the governor signed SB 1053 by Senator Blakespear, which tackles the ongoing problem of plastic pollution. This bill strengthens California's plastic bag ban by eliminating the current exception allowing thick plastic film bags at store checkouts. The governor did veto several bills listed in the legislative report, though none are among the commission's priority bills. A link to the governor's veto message is listed next to each vetoed bill. In general, many of the governor's veto messages this year pointed to fiscal concerns with the proposed legislation, given the current budget deficit. Complete results can be found in the written legislative report. Looking ahead, the legislature is still convened in a special session to consider legislation to address gas prices. The main measure of the special session, AB X21, by Assembly Member Hart, passed out of the Senate Appropriations Committee yesterday and is scheduled to be heard on the Senate floor this Friday. Once special session is concluded, the legislature will go on recess through the election season before convening again in December to swear in new members. Early next year, we'll return to you with the annual new laws memo, which will summarize the signed bills from the 2024 session that either amended the Coastal Act or impact the commission in some way, as well as the summary of any actions the commission will take to implement the legislation. And with that, Chair Hart, that concludes the legislative report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks so much, Mr. Drake. First, I'll ask if there's any public comment on the legislative report?
Uh, no, no speakers for this item.
All right. Turn to the commission. Are there any questions for Mr. Drake on the ledge report? All right, seeing none, we'll move on then to item 6D, the LCP Grant Program.
And I believe Cassie Ducklaw will be presenting the staff report for this one.
Yes, that's right. Thanks, Kate. Um, I do have a presentation, so while that's being brought up. Thank you. Uh, good morning, commissioners. As you said, I'm here to present two LCP grant applications for your consideration, one from the city of Monterey and one from the city of Morro Bay, for which staff is recommending approval. Next slide, please. As a reminder, the LCP Grant Program has been running for just over 10 years and has awarded $21.6 million to 45 jurisdictions to support LCP development or updates with a special emphasis on addressing impacts from climate change and sea level rise. Most recently, the Budget Act of 2021 appropriated $31 million to the Coastal Commission, both to award to local governments as grants and to support Coastal Commission staff administering the program and working with local governments. If the two grants are awarded today, we will have about $6.6 million remaining to award between now and June 2026, so we continue to encourage our local government partners to, statewide, to apply. Next slide. In October 2021, the commission updated the priorities and evaluation criteria for the grant program to better reflect the current state of coastal resiliency planning and to ensure efficient use of these funds. Eligible grantees include local governments responsible for developing and amending LCPs, and eligible projects are those that assess, plan for, and adapt to the impacts of climate change and sea level rise, and which contain an LCP planning component. The program prioritizes technical studies and outreach, environmental justice, adaptation planning at various scales, and work on LCPs. The commission has also made a series of adjusted, adjustments to the application process over time to streamline it and make it more accessible to local governments. Currently, all grant applications can be submitted on and awarded on a, on a rolling basis. The executive director can approve awards up to $500,000, while grants for more than $500,000 require approval from the commission. To date, the executive director has approved 15 grants totaling $4.7 million. These grants are described in Section E of the staff report for this item. The two grants in front of you today fall into the latter category of proposals over $500,000 that require commission approval. Next slide. The first proposal is from the city of Monterey, which is seeking $1.64 million to identify strategies and solutions to mitigate the impacts of sea level rise and climate change. The project will help the city create a roadmap to allocate resources to the right projects and programs at the appropriate time based on observed and projected conditions. Specifically, the project will include a background report that synthesizes existing information on sea level rise vulnerabilities and adaptation strategies that have been proposed or considered. It will also identify data gaps and information that needs to be updated to reflect newer science. The city will build on this information by completing a vulnerability assessment that considers risks that the city, its assets, and its coastal resources are likely to encounter, and which will include assessment of impacts of sea level rise on historically marginalized communities. Next, the city will develop an adaptation plan through a phased approach that includes initial assessment of an array of possible adaptation strategies that are relevant to specific subareas of the city's coastline. Feasible alternatives will be further evaluated and refined, including through an economic analysis that includes an assessment of the benefits, impacts, and costs for each adaptation type. A final adaptation plan will include path, a pathways approach that identifies near, mid, and long-term strategies, implementation actions, and conceptual design plans for near-term priority options, and triggers and thresholds for new adaptation approaches. The adaptation plan will also be informed by comprehensive community engagement that will identify a variety of participatory methods to ensure inclusive and equitable participation. Outside of the proposed grant, the city is currently working on fully certifying its LCP for the first time and expects to do so concurrently with the early phases of this project. As part of the proposed grant work, the city will develop what it expects to be an amendment to at that point, the recently certified LCP, to incorporate the project findings. Next slide. The second proposal is from the city of Morro Bay, which is seeking $750,000 to update its waterfront master plan, a portion of the city's LCP, to better address sea level rise. The WMP has not been updated since 1997, and its age has resulted in difficulty for planning along the waterfront. Updating this master plan to develop harbor area coastal hazard standards and requirements related to implementing various adaptation strategies is specifically called for in the city's recently comprehensively updated LCP. The project will focus on the waterfront planning area from Little Morro Creek along the Embarcadero south to Tideland's Park, and will include updates to previously completed technical studies to incorporate current best available science. The city will also develop a feasibility and adaptation study to address commercial and waterfront industrial development in the Embarcadero and harbor area. The study will identify triggers for implementing sea level rise adaptation strategies such, such as raising infrastructure along the waterfront or relocating critical water and wastewater infrastructure. The work will be informed by community engagement, including the formation of a waterfront master plan advisory committee consisting of community members and local stakeholders, who will act in an advisory capacity to provide recommendations to the planning commission and city council. The city will also take proactive steps to involve underserved communities in its public engagement efforts. This may include providing a wide range of options for public participation and establishing a focus group to represent the interests of underserved neighborhoods. The city will update the current WMP to better address sea level rise and climate change, incorporating the findings from the vulnerability assessment, adaptation report, and community engagement. It will include updated design and development standards for the planning areas, and will also expand the current planning area to include both sides of the Embarcadero, as well as the old wastewater treatment plan property. The updated WMP8 will be submitted to the The updated WMP8 will be submitted to the Coastal Commission for certification as an LCP amendment. Next slide. Staff believe that both of the proposed projects are consistent with the LCP grant program priorities and evaluation criteria adopted by the commission. Both will build on past and ongoing work to develop detailed adaptation approaches to address anticipated sea level rise impacts in a way that considers local and statewide goals to ensure resilience of public access, coastal dependent and related assets, habitats, and other coastal resources. These proposed projects also align with recommendations from the commission and local government working group to approach LCP updates in a phased manner by, for example, building on general sea level rise policies with more detailed adaptation information. There is also significant need for both projects. In the case of Monterey, to build on the anticipated certification of the city's first complete LCP with more refined adaptation strategies, and in the case of Morro Bay, to fulfill actions that are called for in the recently certified comprehensive LCP update. Both projects will also advance the types of planning efforts required by SB 272, with both cities proposing to update their vulnerability assessments, complete adaptation plans, identify more detailed adaptation options, and in the case of Monterey, to complete an economic analysis. Both projects will also include robust public outreach and engagement to inform planning work, and both have identified options for focused engagement with environmental justice communities. Next slide. In conclusion, commission staff is recommending awarding LCP local assistance grants to the city of Monterey for $1.64 million and to the city of Morro Bay for $750,000. The motion and resolution are in page three of the staff report, and staff are recommending a yes vote, and we are available for any questions. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Ms. Ducklo. All right, uh, let me ask if there are any speakers on this item.
Uh, yes, we have one person who wishes to speak.
Okay, is that on Zoom or?
Uh, we have in-person Levi Hill, the Monterey Planning Manager.
Great. Mr. Hill. Yep, three minutes.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. Uh, as noted, I'm Levi Hill, Planning Manager for the city of Monterey. I'm joined by Senior Planner Chrissy Sabdo, who's also been working on this project. And as one of the local governments included in item 60 on the agenda, uh, we just wanted to quickly extend our thanks for the commission's support through the local assistance program. Uh, if awarded, this grant will directly fund planning efforts addressing sea level rise and adaptation, uh, which is considered to be one of the most critical threats to our coastal areas. We wanted to give a special thank you to the Coastal Commission staff, Kelsey Ducklo and Carrie Batha for all their help along the way. And we're available for any questions. Thank you.
Great, thanks so much.
And we just had one other person available for questions. Airlynn Singleval, the Community Development Director of Morro Bay.
Yeah. Okay. All right, uh. I just didn't know if you were pointing. Okay, all right, so I'll bring it, close public comment on that. Bring it back to the commission, ask if there are any comments. Commissioner Cummings.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Since there were no other commenters, I've just raised my hand and getting out.
Of course.
I just want to thank, um, the city of Monterey and Morro Bay for buying for these grants and for the commitment of the commission to provide that funding and make that available and the assistance, because a lot of communities really want to move forward, and oftentimes they may not have the funds to move forward with, you know, doing these updates. And, um, it's really critical, given the impacts we've been facing recently of the knowledge that we have regarding, um, sea level rising. So I'm happy to make the motion when the time is appropriate.
Great, thanks so much. Any other comments? Um, I, all right, seeing none, I have a question for Ms. Ducklo, if she could come back. Sure. Thanks so much. So, one of the things that I'm curious about, first of all, I want to just recognize that the commission has had meetings in both of these locations in the last six months, and I think it's great because it gives us a perspective on what these communities are facing in terms of sea level rise and the challenges. And I'm really excited about these grants. But I'm curious if you could address, how, how do the LCP, um, how does the LCP process embrace public lands and specifically state parks? Do they assist state parks in addressing sea level rise vulnerability for the parks within the LCP area, or how does that work?
Uh, it depends. We certainly have some grants and some LCPs that have considered, uh, state park areas. Um, other grants and areas sort of think about state parks a little bit separately since the management of those lands is somewhat separate. Um, but we certainly are supportive of thinking about those areas and making sure that we are planning with those areas in mind. Uh, those are, of course, important recreational areas for, for these communities and for the state. And so we do want to make sure that those are incorporated into these planning efforts.
So would that be the case? I mean, having just been in Morro Bay, they have the two campgrounds on either side of the town. So in the case of Morro Bay, would you anticipate that it would include looking at the vulnerability of those campgrounds?
Um, I am not specifically sure in the case of Morro Bay. This is specifically their waterfront master plan area, which I think is a little bit more focused on the Embarcadero waterfront. They do have passed LCP work that looked at the whole city. Um, if Airlynn is available, he may be able to answer more specifically, uh, for that area.
And I'm bringing in Airlynn right now, just in case.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it.
So, good morning, honorable commission and staff. I'm Airlynn Singleval, I'm Morro Bay's Community Development Director. Uh, before I answer the question, I do just want to take an opportunity to thank, um, your staff. Uh, Kelsey and Carrie have been extremely supportive in helping us develop this grant application as of, um, as have Sarah and Ryan from the Santa Cruz office. So, the current waterfront master plan covers the area from Tideland's Park, which is just north of the state park, um, all the way along the Embarcadero and then up to and, um, to Moro Rock. And then with the waterfront master plan update, um, the scope would be expanded to also include the old wastewater treatment plant site. So the short answer is that no, the state park is not, um, within the area of the current waterfront master plan or the envisioned area for the updated, uh, master plan.
Okay, thanks so much. And so with regard to that, I'll just express my continuing concern of the critical importance of sea level rise vulnerability studies that address, uh, the state parks in California. And I know in Morro Bay, uh, there definitely is some real vulnerability, given the location of those campgrounds and those parks. All right, on that note, uh, I will turn to Commissioner Cummings for the motion.
I move that the commission award LCP local assistance grant funding of $1,640,000 to the city of Monterey and $750,000 to the city of Morro Bay and authorize executive director or the designated to enter into grant agreements with guarantees for allocation of these funds and to make any amendments thereto, subject to the requirements and conditions set forth in the staff recommendation, I ask for a yes vote.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and we'll need a roll call vote on this. First vote.
Commissioner Aguirre.
Yes.
Aguirre, yes. Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Cummings.
Aye.
Cummings, yes. Commissioner Escalante.
Yes.
Escalante, yes. Commissioner Lowenberg.
Yes.
Lowenberg, yes. Commissioner Newsom.
Aye.
Newsom, yes. Commissioner Rice.
Yes.
Rice, yes. Commissioner Uranga.
Aye.
Uranga, yes. Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Chair Hart.
Yes.
Hart, yes, the vote is unanimous.
All right, thank you so much. All right, uh, as our, uh, I believe it was Mr. Schwang indicated earlier, we're going to be trailing item in 6E, so we'll move on to item 6F.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And for this item, I would like to welcome Jennifer Luquezi, who is the Executive Officer of the State Lands Commission, uh, to today's hearing and this item. I have asked Jennifer to join us today to share the role and perspective of the State Lands Commission as it relates to the Newport Harbor mooring rates issue. As you will recall, the city of Newport Beach is considering an increase in the rates it charges for mooring leases within Newport Harbor, as well as changes to how those leases are managed. We have received a lot of public comment on this issue, and the commission has raised concerns, uh, about the consideration and implementation of those proposed changes, especially as it relates to the equity of proposed mooring rate, um, mooring rates across all leaseholders within Newport Bay. For the past several months, uh, staff has coordinated closely with staff from the State Lands Commission, um, and we were collectively pleased that the city, uh, opted to pause its consideration of mooring rate increases and rule changes while the State Lands Commission conducts a review of the city's management of its granted public trust lands. So now I'd like to turn it over to Jennifer to give us a little bit more detailed discussion of the roles and responsibilities of the State Lands Commission. Thank you.
Welcome, and thank you so much for coming in person.
Of course.
It's really nice to see you.
Oh, it's wonderful to see you all, the Chair Hart, commissioners. It's always an honor and a pleasure to be able to speak with you, especially in person. And good morning, Dr. Hucklebridge and your incredible staff. Um, so as, uh, Dr. Hucklebridge was saying, I'll provide an overview, some background on the Newport mooring rates issue, uh, provide, um, a background on our role and jurisdiction in overseeing the city's management of its tidelands, and then talk about the work that we're doing and our next steps. And of course, be available to answer any questions that you have. So, um, the legislature, uh, granted the state's tide and submerged lands in Newport Bay to the city of Newport Beach to manage on behalf of the state. The city's legislative granting statutes, the common law public trust doctrine, and the California Constitution require the city to manage its granted lands for the benefit of the statewide public, not for purely private or local interests. State trustees are obligated to administer these lands fairly and equitably without discriminating among users and rates. And as, um, Dr. Hucklebridge mentioned, this has been an issue that has been ongoing for many years, but really came to a head in January of this year when the city of Newport Beach released an appraisal to reassess its offshore mooring rates in Newport Bay to reflect fair market value, a requirement for the city's management of its public trust lands. The appraisal served as the basis for the proposed rate increases and could result in mooring holders seeing rate hikes of up to 400%. The proposed mooring rates, uh, increase also highlighted discrepancies between the methodology and rate of mooring permits compared to the residential peer leases in Newport Bay. And there was, um, uh, obviously a lot of public concern relating to, um, the discrepancy in the approaches, uh, for the rental increases. So the commission oversees the city's management of these lands to ensure compliance with its granting statutes, its fiduciary duties, which are outlined in the Public Resources Code and the common law public trust doctrine. The city's role as trustee of Newport Bay's tidelands requires that it manage these lands for the benefit of the statewide public. As the trustee responsible for managing these granted lands, the city does have the authority to set rents and rates for the use of its granted lands and the responsibility to ensure that all users are treated equitably and charged fair market rates. Rates below far market, fair market value could be considered an unconstitutional gift of public property, which is a violation of the California Constitution. And subsidizing private individuals or groups at the expense of public funds and assets could violate the city's fiduciary duties to manage public trust lands for the benefit of the people of California, not for private gain. This is the lens upon which we enter into our, um, the State Lands Commission enters into our oversight role. As Dr. Hucklebridge mentioned, the city agreed to pause any further action on their rental rates for mooring permits or the residential peer leases while the State Lands Commission conducts a management review of the city's management of its granted tidelands. We are, uh, evaluating the city's policies on peer and mooring rates, the frequency and basis of rate adjustments, and the terms of leases and permits, including any modifications made in response to previous concerns raised, including the 2006, 2007 grand jury report, which identified the rental rates in Newport Bay Harbor as being a concern for potential violation of their fiduciary duties. The review will cover all user categories to ensure equity, addressing both peer lease rates and mooring rates at the same time. We believe this is the best way to guarantee that all rates are fair, reflecting a balanced consideration of the users and impacts across Newport Bay. We have requested detailed records from the city, including historical data on rates, lead, rates, leases, and permit forms, city council decisions, and appraisals relating to the residential peers and moorings. The city provided this information in early September, and we are now reviewing all the documents. The findings of our review will inform our assessment of the city's compliance with its legal and policy obligations. We are also coordinating very closely with coastal staff, um, in their role in enforcing the Coastal Act. And in conclusion, I do want to thank the city for their cooperation and forthcoming with all the documents and information that we have requested. And importantly, I also want to express my sincere gratitude to the public and to users of Newport Bay, who have also been very engaged with us, providing, um, additional information and data, as well as their own analysis. They're spending a lot of time, their own time, personal time, helping us understand the impacts of, um, Newport Bay's management of its tidelands on their own lives, um, and use of the bay. So I really want to express my gratitude for their time and energy and working with us. And with that, um, I will take any questions that you have. Now we're in the future on this issue.
Great, thanks so much. Before I open for public comment, I was just wondering, uh, for the public, is there, what's the best way to contact you on this issue? Or is there a website or what's informational?
Yeah, the best way is to reach out directly to me. Um, we have, uh, my email address is on our website, and members of the public have been very, um, good about emailing me and our team, um, providing information and asking various questions and that sort of thing. But the best way is just to go on our website, either find my email address or our chief councils, um, or even our, um, chief of our external affairs. And we can, uh, we'll be very responsive and follow up with them.
Great, and the State Lands Commission also has public hearings?
Yes, yes. So we have, um, similarly, we have, um, uh, public meetings every two months, and a lot of, um, members of the public and users of Newport Bay have been, um, participating in our public meetings as well, very similar to yours. But that's another way that they can, um, uh, talk directly with our commissioners and express their concerns.
That's great. Thank you so much, Jennifer. I'm sure there will be questions, but I'll open it up now for public comment before bringing you back to the commission.
Okay, uh, we have seven speakers, uh, two in the room. We're starting with Adam Leverens and then Peter Kaz.
All right, the speakers will have two minutes.
Uh, good morning, commissioners and staff again. And I, I thank you so very much, both state lands and coastal, for recognizing what's, uh, going on in Newport and that it needs some oversight. Um, as was mentioned, the city decided to pause. I will note that they decided to pause after two letters of concern from the State Lands Commission and one letter of concern from the Coastal Commission. Um, I, I've been heavily involved in this since January, and they're very determined to get what they want, which is to the detriment of a lot of, uh, people of lesser means that have access to the harbor and coast through mooring rentals. Their local coastal program, uh, defines that moorings are to be maintained as a low-cost access point for people who can't afford to reside in the area. And in fact, most mooring permittees don't live in Newport Beach and can't vote there and are generally not listened to, it seems at council. Um, the, uh, responsibility to set fair rates, I, I think that's what really got people's attention. And we slow, showed a slide back in April, I believe, in Long Beach. A boat on a residential pier pays a mere fraction of what a mooring permittee pays. And looking through the city's fee schedule for their commercial rates, medium commercial marinas, small commercial marinas, shipyards, uh, boat rental facilities, sport fishing charters, restaurant guest slips, vessel charters, and fuel docks all pay lower rates than offshore mooring permittees or onshore mooring permittees. These are for-profit permits, and yet they pay a fraction of what offshore mooring permittees pay. The, uh, 2006, 2007 grand jury report was mentioned. That's, you know, 18 years ago. And in the engagement letter, state lands sent the city, they requested official minutes and transcripts of all city council meetings in which the city dealt with any of this. Rather than provide transcripts, the city has provided copies of meeting minutes and public comment. May I have an extension for 30 seconds?
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, public comment is sanitized and cut down, so there's a lot of information missing. Also, the state lands asked for all staff reports, memoranda, and other. Also, the State Lands asked for all staff reports, memoranda, and other material considered or prepared by the city. The city only provided city council-related materials. There are harbor commission reports from 2009, harbor commission meetings from 2009, harbor commission staff report from 2022. All these things are highly relevant, but the city has not provided those. And I want to make sure that everything's in there. The volume of materials is overwhelming, I imagine, for you folks as well as us. But we want this to be complete and thorough, thank you.
Thank you. Peter Kaz, and then our Zoom speakers. We'll start with Jennifer Creston, Wade Womack, and Hein Austin.
My name is Peter Kaz, and I just want to thank you guys for looking at this matter more details. And also thank you for requesting the information from the city. I just want to let you guys know that we, we own our mooring equipment. We, we do the maintenance on our mooring. And we just want to, we're just looking for a fairness, that's all we're looking for. And also look at the price discrimination between what we pay as a mooring permittee, as also the residential dock. They pay much less. And 400% increase is huge. And compared to what the residential is paying like, so our difference is going to be much higher after that 400% increase on the rate. And yeah, I just, we just want to be able to take my son, I take my family on a boating and, and have it, have it resolved, you know? Instead of going back and forth, I, we're looking for stability. We're looking for something to be like, it's done. It's been going on for almost a couple of months, six months, eight months now. I'm just, just looking for that, thank you so much.
Thank you. And moving to Zoom speakers, Jennifer Creston, followed by Wade Womack and Hein Austin. Jennifer Creston.
Hi, I believe I have a video, a short video.
Yes, we're ringing it up.
Hi, my name is Sunny, I'm a barista in Newport. And we're here in front of our mooring. It's a boat that we use to just have fun.
So we can hear the volume, obviously. Why don't we stop it and see?
Hi, my name is Sunny, I'm a barista in Newport. And we're here in front of our mooring. It's a boat that we use to just have fun with our family. And it gives us access to the coast. And I'd like to say, to thank the Coastal Commission and State Lands Commission for working so hard to keep these accessible. And we hope to just continue to enjoy this boat and this mooring with our children for the years to come.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for being here for us and for everyone else who lives in California on the water. Sunny is just one of the many working-class boat owners who, like me, want to remain able to enjoy the harbor with their families and friends. As you saw in the video, Sunny's boat is on a mooring for which her family has made a significant financial investment. The mooring tackle alone costing in excess of $7,000 and requiring replacement every two years. Unlike waterfront homeowners with docks who can walk out to their boats, Sunny and her children must either swim, which is not a good idea, or use a dinghy paddleboard, et cetera. They have no other option for access. And while some waterfront homeowners have expressed their disdain for and dislike of the appearance of moored boats in the harbor, Newport Harbor moorings have existed for decades and provide a significant addition.
Go ahead and complete your comments.
To the city's income from Newport Harbor that's much greater than that from residential and commercial docks. And while the length of moored boats is limited to the size of the mooring, there are boats on private docks in Newport Harbor that extend into the harbor several feet beyond the end of their dock, pay nothing for the tidelands they cover, and are a hazard to navigation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Wade Womack, Hein Austin, and then Richard Navarro. Wade Womack.
Hi, can you hear me? And can you put up my slide, please? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, thank you. Good morning, Chair Hart and Honorable Commissioners. My name is Wade Womack. I'm a boater in Newport Beach. Thank you for protecting affordable boating access. The boaters on a budget. And thank you for looking closely at the disparity in tideland rates in Newport. And thank you to SLC staff for making sure tideland users are treated equally. Here's a slide of a father showing his daughter how to tie their small boat on a mooring. These moorings have historically been inexpensive because the permit holder owns the tackle and maintains the tackle. It costs the city nothing. And to add on to Mr. Leverens' point, the transferability issue was addressed. The grand jury report is a false flag from 2006. These moorings are available for sublet to the public. That generates $300,000 per year for public benefit and public use. There's significant transfer fees. It's a highly regulated process. The transfer fees benefit the tideland fund as well. The grand jury report from 18 years ago is a false flag. In a minute, I'd like to show a video. And in case the volume's too low, actually, can we go to next slide, please? Please remember, 2022, city staff recommended shore mooring rates go up 1,000%. It's there in writing. Clearly, they wanted to price the moorings, and the little guy, out of the harbor, guy and gal. My video, please. In case the volume's low, the speaker's main points are 400 to 500%, it's ridiculous.
Hello, everyone, my name is Long Fam. I'm a former American.
The fees are ridiculous, increased recommendations, and they conflict with the government principle. Do not overcharge. It's a 30-second video, please. Can you play my video, Chair?
I'm not. No, he said turn the volume up. You know, one of the things we used before is that closed caption function, which might be helpful. But why don't we just play the video and turn the volume up as high as you can?
Hello, everyone, my name is Long Fam. I'm a former American, I'm a former vice president of the American Society of Mechanical Engineers and also a retired Oregon State Education Trustee. I have the mooring over here for over 25 years. And, you know, it's ridiculous when the city went to increase it for 500% so that they can just cover for their general fund. I think this is, I believe this is against the principle of our American government, which only allowed the government to check for the service. We would not allow the government to check for a service anymore than it cost them to provide a service.
Thank you. Next, Hein Austin, followed by Richard Navarro, and then George Hilkema. Hein Austin.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Hein Austin, and I'm advocating for equitability in Newport Harbor. Did you know that the city of Newport Beach created a huge harbor budget problem? And the city wants the moorings to pay while giving the affluent dock owners a break? For example, notation A shows in 2016, the Orange County sheriffs offered to continue to manage the harbor along with 1,200 moorings for around $300,000 per year. The city council and affluent dock owners on the harbor commission decided to take over the management of the, from the sheriffs under the pretense they can do it better and cheaper. Today, the harbor department budget for the same harbor and the same number of moorings is $2.7 million and counting. One of the fundamental problems behind the inequity in Newport Harbor is this out-of-control harbor budget the city created. To solve this problem, the city created a scheme called the New Moring License Program to commercialize people's mooring permits. The city will say anything to make the Coastal Commission to believe it cares about affordable coastal access and fair market value, but the city's actions prove to be opposite. Here's how. To generate the demand for this new scheme, the city created an artificial mooring scarcity problem in the harbor. There are about 100 vacant moorings on any given day available in the harbor to be used as guest moorings. Notation B shows that in 2010, guest mooring rates were $5 per night. Thousands of lower-income boaters, along with the coast, used to have affordable access to the coastal waters until the harbor department raised the prices incrementally to $57 a night. In addition to paying $57 a night, boaters also must pay $25 a day to launch a boat at the only boat landing in Newport Harbor for a total of $82, $82 for guest moorage. Thanks to the city, most. Finally, thanks to the city, most lower-income boaters can no longer afford guest moorage. The city's alternative solution by design is for boaters to line up for the new city mooring license program lottery so that the city can say, see, there is a high demand for our 16 mooring licenses. The moorings are funded 100% by the law-abiding, low-income mooring permittees. And I want to thank you guys for protecting low coastal, low cost coastal access. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Richard Navarro, and then George Hilkema. Richard Navarro.
Hello, thank you. My name is Richard Navarro, and my testimony is intended to provide you with some context for the review of the city of Newport Beach and also to show the constructive role of the Newport Mooring Association when invited to the table. Next slide. So the Newport, next slide. The Newport Mooring Association joined the Harbor Commission's mooring master plan subcommittee and met for three years to arrive at a proposal to address the grand jury's findings for a revised transfer process that is fair and equitable to all parties involved. Rather than adopting the subcommittee's report, the city council instead voted to raise mooring rates and terminated transferability. It also gave residential dock permittees the ability to rent peers and to transfer their permits. Next slide, please. The mooring master plan subcommittee was then reconvened, once again, to address Coast Guard concerns with the mooring fields and to revisit the transferability issue, which ended loopholes and increased fees. And this time, the city adopted their plan. Next slide. The city adopts the mooring reconfiguration plan, which the NMA has opposed, and it introduces a mooring licensing program with no public input. Next slide. The city abandons its two-year effort to raise mooring rates by 300 to 500% and instead ends a new, and instead ends a new mooring permit, converting them to city-owned mooring licenses with a 360% rate increase, all with no public input. At the same time, the city increases residential permit rates by a whopping one cent per square foot. What do I hope you get from my presentation? The city has not been a good custodian of the state tidelands. The city's responsibility as managers of state tidelands extends to all California residents, and it's been irresponsible in this regard. The city has demonstrated a pattern of harassment towards mooring permit holders while privileging residential dock permittees. Therefore, very quickly, I recommend that the city of Newport Beach be found not to be fair and equitable custodians of the Newport Harbor, that the management review be open to public input and participation, and finally, that the city be required to give the Newport Mooring Association a seat at the table. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our last speaker, George Hilkema. I seem to be having trouble promoting you as a panelist, so I'm allowing you to speak as an attendee. You should be able to unmute. George Hilkema. And then we just have one other person, Simone Jurgis, who is the city assistant manager for Newport on the line, available for questions.
All right, is the speaker who slides or showing is not able to?
No, I don't, I don't think they're going to speak. All right.
George Hilkema is unavailable.
Okay, you're available for questions.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
George, George Hilkema is unavailable. We're sorry, we're so thrilled with everything that's going on, but he's unavailable to speak right at the moment. Thank you.
Okay, so does that complete the?
Yes, no more speakers.
All right, great. So I'll bring it back to the commission for any questions, either to Executive Officer Lucasey or anyone else. Commissioner Long. So I guess my first question is, when they talk about comparables and they did a study of rents, what do we have, can we get access to those comparables? And do we know that they can really justify them? I mean, I know in the commercial world, no one puts the lowest comparable in when they're showing them. Of course, you want to get the highest rent. So I think we need to be very careful and be very analytical and, you know, have some critical thinking here on what comparables are they using? And are they actually comparables? Because it can really distort a picture quite easily by leaving off the bottom and tweaking it out, you know? So are you comfortable with, with the analysis that's been done on that?
That is something that we are looking into a second time as well. We have appraisers on staff, and we manage 4 million acres of state property throughout the state and have over 4,000 leases ranging from piers and mooring buoys like in the California side of Lake Tahoe, all the way out to marine oil terminals and offshore oil and gas leases. So we have the expertise and the professionals on staff to do a deep dive on the land management operations of the city, including reviewing their appraisal. As a note, appraising tide and submerged lands, lands underwater, are incredibly challenging. There are no direct comparables. You can't sell tidelands, that's constitutionally prohibited. So there are different methodologies that we employ on our own lands when we're negotiating leases and securing lease agreements and rents to help get at what that fair market rental value is, given the challenges associated with appraising tide and submerged lands. So that's a long way of saying, we are taking a deep dive into the city's appraisals, both the current and past, and looking at the methodologies associated with that.
I have two follow-up questions. Do you ever make a distinction between sort of the commercial side and the, let's call it, public-private side? In that, it's one thing if it's a commercial venture that's got income and revenue behind it. For me, it's a different when someone's either living on their boat or it's a recreational use that just, you know, enhances someone's life or the public's life. Is there a distinction there? Because in my mind, there really is a distinction.
Certainly, we have a variety of different rent methodology tools and formulas in our regulations to account for just that from both recreational-type uses, like docks and piers, to more commercial or industrial uses. In addition to that, we also use what we call a public benefit. So in a contract, there has to be consideration. And that consideration can include, and most often does, monetary consideration. But in a lease where the authorized use provides a public benefit, open space, parks, wetlands, or any other kind of public benefit, then what we employ is reducing that fair market rental rate to account for that public benefit or eliminating the monetary consideration altogether. So that is also a tool that's available to our grantees to use as well. I think some of the challenges, just to be very honest, and we've expressed this to the users of Newport Bay, is residential use is not a public trust consistent use. But we are also very well aware of the affordability and homeless crisis going on. And we're humans too. And so we're trying to figure out what the best way to balance all of these competing policy priorities are in a way that does not undermine the ability of individuals to thrive and to carry on with their lives.
I mean, we would be appalled if someone walked in and said, well, my rent just went from $400 to, you know, 2,000, you know, 8,000, whatever it might be. And I don't, I think there's part of me that wants to look at this in a similar way, especially for people that have had these for a long time. And if there's a way, it's, 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 it's not the boat owner's fault that now this city is catching up, quote unquote, to what market is. That's, they didn't do anything wrong. They've paid their rent, they've lived up to their. They've lived up to their obligation. And I just find it a little. Wrong in a moral way to say to somebody, you've done everything you've done, but now all of a sudden, you know. We're going to kick you. What are these people going to do with their boats? I mean, people were living there and we'd be appalled if this were housing. You know, so I just go back to, there's got to be a more equitable way to either stagger it in grandfather people in. Figure out something.
Yeah, no, certainly.
And we would we all stand ready, I think, you know, to to help negotiate this, work something out.
Thank you. Thank you. I think everything that you have articulated is. All the factors and considerations we're taking into account as well. I think, you know, the challenging part is these are public tidelands. And when we start moving into the private exclusive use to the. Exception of the statewide public or the regional public. Those are the considerations that we have to take into account when we're looking at both the terms of any particular lease. Or and the rent associated with it. And I think what's really appalling in this situation is that incredible discrepancy. Between the peer rates and the mooring rates. And I can also acknowledge or I acknowledge that the amount of tidelands that are being utilized by those private recreation. Our residential peers and the vessels that are attached to those peers is significantly larger than the moorings and the boats associated with those moorings. So there is some real definite inequity going on here.
Great, thank you.
Can I just, just because it's relevant to that, Commissioner Aguirre mentioned that she actually worked on your environmental justice policy. And I was just wondering, as a just as a to conclude your remarks in response to Commissioner Loenberg, if you could talk about what the relevance is of your environmental justice policy. How you're applying that to this situation.
That is a great question. So we are looking at the city's management of its tidelands through not only the lens of the legal frameworks. That they have to manage these lands through, but also through the lens of our environmental justice policy. And looking at the access elements, public access, increased access to the tidelands. So we are certainly taking that into consideration.
Great, thank you. So we have Commissioner Cummings and Commissioner Wilson both wishing to speak. Commissioner Cummings.
Yeah, I just want to start by thanking the public from Newport Beach for bringing this to our attention. I mean, there's sometimes when these types of injustices happen and it's hard to know who to go and talk to and. Whose attention and who can actually help. And so I'm just really glad that they reached out to us so that we could really start looking deeper into this and. And really find a way to help address these concerns because it really is something I think that we're all really deeply concerned with in terms of the way Newport Beach is approaching. These folks who are, you know, have lower rates or actually it turns out higher rates than the private docks. But really, you know, it's definitely a in a social inequity situation that needs to be addressed. I guess. I guess I'd like to understand, like, when, what's the timeline for when this will come either before state lands? Or like, we'll be able to get an update and everyone will get to know, like, you know, what's the final conclusion of this? Because it sounds like it's it's underway, but it might take some time to kind of analyze all the documents and really get down into the details.
Yeah, so we had originally set the end of this year to finish our assessment. However, as as you noted, Commissioner, there are a lot of documents that we're going through. And we're right in the middle of that and we may have to, will likely have to follow up with the city to request additional documents, additional information. So I could foresee this, given where we are at the end of the year already, going into early next year. Our practice would be to finish our assessment, share that out for public comment. And then bring it to our commission either as an action item or an informational item after receiving public comment. Working with the city on any recommendations that we have and bringing that to our commission for their consideration. So I think during that period of time, once we release the assessment and work through it with all the stakeholders. That's a time that we can come back to you with a presentation on what the findings were. And of course, we from the beginning planned to work closely with your staff so that they are aware throughout the process of how things are evolving.
And that leads me to my next question, and maybe this might be for Director Hucklebridge. But I'm just also wondering, I guess we're wondering what the commission's jurisdiction is in this context and in this situation.
So that's actually a kind of challenging question. We're still trying to assess that out. I think where we are now is is working with the city, figuring out exactly how we want to approach it. But also waiting to see what the outcome of the state lands investigation is and or analysis. So it's not a very satisfying answer for you, but I think we will be engaged very closely with state lands. I appreciate the offer to come back to the commission and present findings and at that point, we'll have a clear answer.
Thanks. And then I guess the last comment I have is that I've been thinking about in this context is that is really interesting that the city controls the rates on these moorings. And yet they're, it sounds like they're fully maintained by the individuals who are utilizing them. So while it's, it seems like it's a public use, it's also privately maintained and purchased and owned. So I, it also strikes me as, you know, what are they actually charging these individuals for? And does it make sense for them to be charging these high rates when they have no, they're not, you know, they do no maintenance. They don't provide the the mooring gear. And so I hope that that's taken into account too, when we're talking about rates. Because it's like the charging market rate for what, you know, in that in this context. And so I think that the the amount of money that a private individual is investing into what's supposed to be a public use. I think it's also, I think that needs to be taken into account as well.
Certainly, I think that is definitely something that we're looking into in terms of the. Value of the rent, the in terms of charging for occupation. So those tackles, the the mooring infrastructure does occupy tidelands. And we operate, we are a land management agency in. So we're different than the Coastal Commission being regulatory, right? So what that means is we act as a landlord, tenant, landlord tenant type of situation. So we have a physical infrastructure that's occupying state tidelands. And the public, the statewide public should be compensated for that occupation. So, for example, in the leases that we manage and issue, I'll just take, for example, the California side of Lake Tahoe. We have about a thousand leases on the California side of Lake Tahoe, some of its marinas. Many of them, the vast majority are individual piers and two mooring buoys. And so we have different rates for the moorings versus the piers. And on the piers and the mooring buoys, we also charge for an impact area. So when the boat is tied up to either the pier or the mooring buoy and the occupation of the land that's taken based on that. In all honesty, our mooring buoy rates are much lower than the residential pier rates. But it is for the compensation of the occupation of state tidelands.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wilson.
Well, I just want to thank you for being here on this end. As someone who was a Harbor District Commissioner for 10 years and we were public trust manager for a big part of Humboldt Bay. I can tell you that as local government, there's a lot of perspective and pressure. That and that is can very much skew that conversation at the local governance level. Because there's not a lot of training or or. Information given to local electeds about public trust responsibility. And and oftentimes the lens is just very localized and not really understanding that the public trust resources are for all the people in California to be managed. And so I just really appreciate. The commission as a backstop to being to being able to offer that guidance, I guess you'd say, to local jurisdictions. When things have evolved over a lot, because as you can, as either commissioners or local decision makers or. Electeds, the the rotate over time, staff rotates over time, agreements are made and these, that's why you're looking for all that history. And so it it and it's not in a statewide context often, even though it's supposed to be managed that way. And so I just want to appreciate the work that you guys are going to be doing to to rectify whatever this situation is here. But also as a reminder to other local jurisdictions that have tideland trust responsibilities, that that that's real. And maybe. I I'm just hoping one one day that maybe we have a little like, if you, if someone's elected as a decision maker. In an agency that has a local tideland trust responsibility, they're given some sort of information or some sort of training to understand that responsibility. Because I certainly wasn't and it took some some real under, you know, some real. Education to get to that place. So I just want to thank you for the effort on this.
Thank you.
That's a great point. Yes, Commissioner Conkle.
Thank you, Chair Hart. I just wanted to express my gratitude for you being here, coming here to us and for you and your staff putting together this management review. I know that it's a large taking on. And specifically to thank you to the public for bringing this to the Coastal Commission's attention, for showing up at our state lands commission meetings as well. I think it's a testament just to showing that that we hear you and that your voice matters. So please continue to to let us know what what's going on. Most of my questions were answered. I just, I wanted to state, restate the controller's concern for disparities between the dock owners and the mooring owners. Thank you so much for for looking into that. And then you addressed a question I had about the timeline. And I just wanted to ensure that while you're conducting your management review, any increases are paused. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you so much. That's all I have.
All right, great. I think that concludes all of our questions and I think that you've heard. A lot of expression of gratitude for all the work you're doing on this and particularly to come back to the commission and give us an update on your findings and where things stand. So thank you so much again for coming in person and for your work on this. And I think it's pretty clear what the concerns are of the commission. I mean, they were expressed so articulately, of course, by my colleagues. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Very nice to see you all.
Nice to see you too. All right, folks, I think what we'll do is we'll take a break at this time. It's about eleven fifteen now. Why don't we plan on coming back at about eleven thirty? We'll give about a little over 10 minutes. We have seven in the room, so let's resume the hearing. We're going to resume the Coastal Commission hearing of Wednesday, October ninth. We are now down to item seven A. And B and C and D and E, the administrative calendar. Are there any speakers on the administrative calendar?
Hello, is that?
I'm sorry. So I'm taking up the administrative calendar and asking if there are any speakers on the administrative calendar.
Uh, no speakers.
All right, great. Do any commissioners want to comment on anything or remove an item on the administrative calendar? All right, there's no motion as this has already been approved by the executive director. So the administrative calendar is approved and now we're going to move on to item eight A. The consent calendar. Is there going to be a presentation on this, Mr. Schweng?
Just briefly, that consent counters for all units and districts on the agenda today, we have one item from Orange County. There's one letter of support for this item. Conditions are acceptable, no opposition, so we're recommending the matter be approved on consent.
Okay, do any commissioners have an ex parte on this item? All right, there are no expertes. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this item, which is eight A?
Uh, no, we just have one available for questions.
All right, bring it back to the commission. Does anyone want to remove an item? All right, seeing none. Does anyone have, does anyone object to a consensus for unanimous approval of item eight A? Seeing none, the consent calendar is approved and we'll now move on to item nine and this is also going to win.
I'm I'm sorry, Chair, I think we need a motion.
Oh.
I'll make a motion.
Excuse me, I just zipped right through the motion part.
And if I I could speak to the motion just for.
Okay, so we we have a motion from Commissioner Wilson and you said you had a statement.
Yeah, just on this one, I just wanted to note that this is a demolition of a duplex. Of two units that are about nine hundred square feet to a building of a condominium where each unit is twenty five hundred square feet. So just, you know, this will have impact on people's housing for sure. What will result is something much more expensive than what is existing. Thanks.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Thanks for that comment. And again, it goes through our ability, our lack of ability to address affordable housing. Which has been a constant topic before this commission. All right, so now we actually have a motion, a second, so I'll return again and ask if there is objection to consensus vote for unanimous approval of item A A. Seeing none, this time item eight A is approved and we will move on to item nine, consent calendar removed from the regular calendar. Mr. Schweng.
Thank you, and we have a number of items from Orange County and San Diego area as well as statewide, starting with item six E. That's the post LCP jurisdiction map layout updates. Item twelve D, the application five twenty four one ninety nine, the querying family trust. Item thirteen A, that's permit five, permit amendment number five nineteen twelve ninety six A one from the city of Newport Beach. Item thirteen B, that's application five fifteen twenty fifty six A one. This is the San Clemente scoop permit amendment. And item thirteen point five A, which is a companion consistency certification to item thirteen A. Item fifteen A, that's the city of Encinitas LCP amendment on their safety element update, LCP time extension. Item fifteen B, the city of Delmar's LCP amendment on their central commercial and public facilities. Land use and zone, LCP time extension. And then item seventeen A, that's per permit amendment six zero zero one ninety eight two. City of San Diego's environmental monitoring and technical services facility. We did receive correspondence from a member of the public related to Delmar's LCP amendment. That is the subject of the time extension under item fifteen B. Those comments don't express any objection to the time extension, which is all that's before the commission today. Instead, the commission, the comments express concerns about the substance of the amendment, which will be coming back before the commission at a later date. There's also correspondence on item twelve D from the applicant in support and thirteen B from Senator Catherine Lake experience support of the staff recommendation. And last, I just do want to note that two of the items thirteen A and thirteen B and the companion consistency item. Are programs that are designed to expedite the placement of sand on beaches in Newport Beach and San Clemente. On the San Clemente matters, staff work closely with the city to bring that application to hearing in the span of just a couple of weeks. We appreciate the city working with us to find ways to streamline approvals for sand placement. And look forward to the city taking advantage of that authorization to help address the ongoing erosion problems in South Orange County. So with that, we're recommending these matters be approved to on the consent calendar for the staff recommendations.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schweng. Does any commissioner have an ex parte on any of these items? Commissioner Scolante, are you, oh, you're not raising your hand. It's just a gesture. All right. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on any of these?
I know, we just have people available for questions.
All right. Does any member of the commission wish to remove an item? All right. Would, can I have a motion to approve items that are removed and placed on the.
I'll move the item.
All right.
One second.
Motion, a second. Any comments? All right, is there any objection to unanimous approval of item nine? Seeing none, item nine is approved. All right, we don't have an enforcement report today. So we will be moving on to the Orange County DDR, item eleven.
Thank you, Chair Hart, and this report contains three waivers and one CDP extension. There's no known opposition. So we're asking whether three or more commissioners object to any. So we're asking whether three or more commissioners object to any of the waivers or the extension in the report.
Thank you. Any speakers?
Uh, no speakers.
All right, do three or more commissioners object to any item on the deputy director's report? All right, in that case, the commission concurs. Item twelve A is our next item.
Uh, thank you. So that does take us down to the item twelve A, the Falazada application. And Shahar Amateh is going to be doing the staff presentation on that matter and if you could bring up the staff PowerPoint.
Mr. Amateh, I'll just do a preemptive comment. It's really been a little bit hard to hear. She could speak really directly into the mic. I just think because of such a big room. Thanks so much.
All right, can you can you hear me all right? Thanks. Good morning, commissioners. Item twelve A is the de novo hearing of an appealed local CDP approved by the city of Dana Point for the construction of a new two-story, single-family residence, then attached garage on the ground floor and an elevated deck on the seaward side, all supported by caissons on a vacant beach fronting lot. The applicants are Laden and Babik Falazada. Next slide, please. The property is located within the beach road or Capistrano Bay community, an approximately mile and a half long established road of residential development with access to homes obtained solely through the private beach road located landward of the subject site. The one and only entry point to beach road is through a gate adjacent to Capistrano Beach County Park. Further landward of beach road are railroad tracks, Pacific Coast Highway and a coastal bluff supporting additional development. Next slide, please. Another view, another overview shot of the beach road community can be seen on this slide. This photo is from two thousand and eight and the beach here appears wide, but it has been in an acutely erosional state starting in the nineteen seventies, recently accelerating to approximately five feet per year. In fact, aerial imagery shows that since circa two thousand and fifteen, there are intermin periods where there is effectively no dry beach at all and the beach is typically only visible during very low tides. The commission staff engineer Jerry Jeremy Smith estimates that the existing erosion rates, that with existing erosion rates, the mean high tide line could imminently reach the line of development within the next couple of decades. Erosion is and will continue to be a serious threat along beach road, including the subject site in the near to medium term. Historically, the beaches in this area have been subject to additional wave uprush damage, flooding and erosion during storm conditions and large summer southerly swell events. Due to the geometry and orientation of this coastal stretch, very long period waves can sometimes propagate inland as large bores, which can overtop and affect lowline coastal structures. Many existing residences located along beach road are already struggling with these hazards and many homeowners have installed unpermitted shoreline protective devices such as seawalls, revetments, ripraps, sandbags and berms in response to the beach's particularly severe erosion over the past few years. Enforcement staff has identified over ninety such cases and these devices in of themselves can exacerbate erosion through modification of shoreline processes, resulting in even narrower beach widths. Of the two hundred and two residential lots along beach road, fourteen parcels are currently vacant or unimproved and they form four clearly visible gaps in the existing row of development. Although neighboring parcel develop parcels with armoring, as well as the current backshore profile likely do provide some protection to the road from wave overtopping under the current range of conditions, it is probable that flooded waters can enter through these gaps during extreme events since portions of the road are at a lower elevation than extreme total water level elevations. In fact, the access road at the nearby county beach park has flooded as a result of wave overtopping during high tide events. Given the risk to the road, the Capistrano Bay Community Services District has recently brought in its authority to include protection of the road from flood damage. Thus, ample evidence exists that all beachfront residential development in the beach road community is subject to an unusually high degree of risk due to storm waves and surges, high surf conditions, erosion and flooding. For these reasons, the commission has been highly involved in regional planning efforts to ensure that South Orange County, including the beach road community, remain resilient and adaptive to future coastal hazards and rising sea levels. Next slide, please. The site is located at about the midway point of the beach road community. It is currently vacant and consists of beach sand, minor vegetation and a fence on the landward street facing side. A lateral public access easement is recorded on the site. The first ten feet immediately seaward of the LCP's required patio string line is a privacy buffer that is restricted to pass and repass only. The rest of the beach seaward of the privacy buffer, which currently averages about ninety feet wide in the summertime, is available for passive recreation. No shoreline armoring is currently installed on site, although errant rock from neighboring properties may drift toward the site as seen here. Next slide, please. The project is approved by the city as for the construction of a new two-story, twenty-eight-foot-tall, four thousand one hundred and thirty-two-square-foot, single-family residence with an attached five hundred twenty-eight-square-foot, two-car garage on the ground floor. The garage will be enclosed with breakaway panels on the seaward side. There would also be a seaward-facing deck. The city approved elevation of the residence garage and deck above beach grade using forty-five caissons. No shoreline protection devices were approved in association with this project. The city also approved encroachments, as can be seen in this slide, including one, an eighteen an eighteen-foot-wide, second-story balcony extending eight feet beyond the structure string line over the lower deck. Two, an administrative modification of standards, which would allow for a twenty-six-foot-wide section of stairs and landing to encroach three feet seaward of the structure string line over the lower deck. And three, a three and a half foot wide set of stairs extending three feet beyond the patio string line from the lower deck to the beach. Encroachments beyond the structure patio string lines are allowed by the city's certified LCP. Next slide, please. The Dana Point LCP requires new development to be sited within or as close as possible to existing developed areas where it can be accommodated and adequately served by public services, such as utilities and infrastructure, without adverse impacts to coastal resources. New development is required to minimize risks to life and property in areas of high geologic and flood hazard without reliance on the construction of protection devices and new development is required to minimize alteration of natural landforms. Typically, there are no more than one or two vacant lots between existing structures in the beach road community. And thus, new development in this area could often be considered infill. Infilling of residential development between existing structures, if cited and designed correctly, typically would not result in significant adverse effects to coastal resources within these existing developed shoreline areas. The area surrounding the subject site is characterized as a substantially developed beach. And in the case of the proposed development, the single-family residence can be designed and sited such that it is considered as infill development within an existing developed area. The applicants are proposing to elevate the habitable portions of the structure on caissons above the future base flood elevation as well as conform with the string line policies of the LCP, which dict which dictate the allowable seaward extent of the residential structure and beachfront patio. Commission staff identified several deficiencies in the city-approved project design that must be addressed to ensure that the new development minimize risks to life and property arising from coastal hazards and minimize adverse impacts on coastal resources. However, even with design modifications, which will be discussed later in this presentation, staff is concerned about the sighting of the project. Toward the end of the life of the project, beach road itself, which is the main street for ingress and egress into and out of the community, will be heavily impacted by coastal hazards such as flooding and erosion and as sea levels rise, may no longer provide adequate road access to the residences. In addition, municipal services such as sewer, gas, electric and water systems may be frequently inundated with floodwaters, leading to corrosion, impairment and contamination. In other words, the area will continue to be subject to the high degree of risk posed by coastal hazards in the future as exacerbated by sea level rise, which is discussed next. Next slide, please. And Billy, if you could please play the video. Let's see, it's not not working. It's unfortunate, but I think we'll we'll just describe. Yes, so the video, it's drone footage going from north to south from Capistrano Beach County Park, showing waves hitting the residences and you know, carrying flotsam debris from the patios into the ocean. So in the future, climate change and resulting sea level rise will increase the exposure of beach road to coastal flooding. With one foot of silver eyes, the frequency that water from overtopping waves reaches the road will increase, but likely will still be limited to extreme events. With two feet of silver eyes, wave overtopping may temporarily flood the road during the winter season approximately once per year on average due to higher water levels and beach erosion. The mean high tide line is expected to migrate inland and underneath a proposed residence with as little as two and a half feet of silver eyes, which is within the anticipated project lifespan. With three to four feet of silver eyes, flooding of beach road could worsen during extreme events to the point where waves consistently overtop the road with great force during a storm event, leaving the road in a dangerous impassable condition for the duration of high tide. With five feet of silver eyes, the road at its current elevation could experience wave overtopping nearly daily in serious flooding at least once a year. Current best available science estimates up to approximately four point seven feet of silver eyes by the year twenty one hundred in this area. With greater than five feet of sea level rise, the beach road community would need to rely on significant investments in coastal flood reduction infrastructure to maintain reliable access during average coastal conditions. Next slide, please. The commission must therefore contemplate whether new development should be approved in light of these facts. In this particular case, development can be designed and conditioned to be consistent with the LCP, including future removal of the development if it is not safe to access or inhabit the residence because the road is consistently flooded or if utilities are damaged beyond repair. Thus, commission staff recommends special condition seven. This condition also specifies that in the event that the applicants or successors or assigns relocate and or remove the development if it comes to encroach on public trust lands when the mean high tide line migrates landward with sea level rise. A mean high tide line survey prepared by the applicants or the district every five years, as required by special condition five, can provide the necessary information to ensure that the development is adequately and promptly removed from public land in the future. Next slide, please. The standard review for the subject application is the city's certified local coastal program and the public access and recreation policies in chapter three of the coastal act. Both the LCP and coastal act contain policies that maximize public access to and along the shoreline. As mentioned earlier, the site contains a lateral public access easement on a portion of the site, seaward of the LCP-defined patio string line for passive recreation. The city's approval did not mention this easement, nor did it make substantive findings as to whether a public access easement should be required in connection with this project. Instead, the city found that there is no reason to require one because, quote, there is adequate access nearby, unquote, and because the subject project would not have individual or cumulative adverse impacts on public access. Nevertheless, the LCP has a policy that requires a rigorous and fact-intensive analysis of a variety of factors related to public access for new development between the first public road and the sea. Commission staff was concerned that Capistrano Beach County Park and Pocha Beach, the two nearest entry points to the beach-fronting beach road, are over three quarters miles away from the site respectively, which is far. Moreover, even if these were somehow considered nearby, these entry points will become increasingly inundated and unsafe in the future and they may not necessarily provide adequate beach access to the public. As such, the city erred in granting an exception to public access based on the adequate access nearby standard. Staff was then asked with was then tasked with analyzing whether the development would have adverse impacts on public access as it is the default in the LCP to require a new lateral public pedestrian access easement along the beach road community unless the analysis shows that the development would not have adverse public access impacts. In this case, staff believes that the city-approved development would have some adverse individual and cumulative impacts on public access. For example, the at-grade garage could reflect wave energy and obstruct the flow of water, which could affect shoreline processes and consequently public access on the beach. Additionally, the caisson-supported elevated deck could loom over public beach area and could be difficult to remove and it has stairs connecting it to the beach that physically encroach into the existing public easement area. However, the development can be conditioned such that these issues would be minimized or eliminated. Moreover, staff believes that a new easement or dedication need not be required in light of the existing easement already on the site. Next slide, please. The LCP requires that new development be visually compatible with the character of surrounding areas and where feasible, restore and enhance visual quality. There must be adequate sighting and design of the development to protect views of the coast from public vantage points such as public roads, trails and public recreational areas and to minimize adverse view impacts to and along the coast. The views shown from the California Coastal Trail and Coast Highway, which are approximately one hundred feet inland of the site, provide expansive views of major scenic resources across beach road, including ocean whitewater and blue water, ocean horizon, shoreline and coastline and beach, as shown on the left-hand side. Looking inland across the site from the public beach, there are spectacular views of the coastal bluffs. Since the site is currently vacant, except for a low-lying fence along the street front edge, a project of any scope could significantly affect the public coastal view opportunities in the area. The applicants have submitted a visual impact study that shows the residence as proposed as well as a project alternative suggested by commission staff and shown on the right-hand side with an open carport instead of an enclosed garage on the ground level. Staff asked for this alternative because of the belief that the proposed residence with an enclosed garage would would obstruct public views to the ocean as compared to an open carport. Staff recognizes that the rendering on this slide shows parked cars in the carport, so additional blue water views are minimal. But staff believes that during times when cars are not parked in the carport, the public could enjoy ocean views from the California Coastal Trail and Coast Highway. There are also other reasons why a carport condition is preferable to enclosed garage as discussed next. Next slide, please. One of the other issues that an enclosed garage at this location is that it would create marine debris. Given the highly dynamic environment, the garage walls and any stored items within could become dislodged during high wave and flooding conditions and dispersed into the ocean where they could contribute to pollution of the marine environment and increase the risk to the surrounding area. During flood events in the area, debris has acted as projectiles, damaging existing residences when it smashes into windows and doors. So as approved by the city, the enclosed garage would have a breakaway panel wall on the seaward side such that it would not act like a seawall. However, as the name suggests, it would break away when waves hit it. With an with a fully enclosed garage, residents residents could be more likely to store hazard hazardous materials such as paints, solvents and household chemicals, which can end up in the marine environment when waves enter the garage. Therefore, staff recommends that the garage be modified to an open carport without a breakaway panel wall on the seaward side or a garage door on the street side and that only two sheer walls perpendicular to the shore on either side of the residence be allowed for structural purposes. This this design change, along with construction BMPs and other water quality measures, would minimize marine debris and protect marine resources. The project also minimize must also minimize adverse impacts to biological and archaeological, paleontological and tribal cultural resources. Special condition fourteen requires the applicants to monitor and avoid nesting birds and roosting bats on site during construction and special condition fifteen requires the applicants to monitor and avoid archaeological, paleontological and tribal cultural resources according to a final submitted plan. Next slide, please. Staff recommends the design changes shown on the slide, including an open carport instead of an enclosed garage, utility floodproofing, pulling back encroachments and making the seaward-facing deck cantilevered and preservation of visual resources through the use of view corridors and caisson treatments. Staff notes that at the time of the publication of the staff report, the applicants agreed to all special conditions, including the open carport condition. However, staff later learned that the applicants were instead interested in a garage door that would retract during flooding conditions using a smart sensor that sends alerts to the homeowner and or home system. The applicants communicated this idea to staff and it is posted as correspondence. There is an addendum for this item that addresses the applicant's contentions raised in the correspondence, including that a garage door would be able to minimize adverse coastal resource impact, that an open carport would 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 result in an unconstitutional taking and that the CDP application is an improper venue to quote-unquote impose commission policy. As described in the addendum, staff believes that the staff recommendation with the open carport alternative still best addresses hazards, marine debris, water quality and visual resource concerns and ensures consistency with the LCP. Next slide, please. Staff recommends that the commission approve the de novo coastal development permit for the staff recommendation. The motion to accomplish this can be found on page seven of the staff report. This concludes the staff presentation. Staff, including the commission's staff engineer Jeremy Smith, are available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Emmett. All right, are there any exportes on this item? All right, I have one. It was September 26th, and it is on file. All right, I'll then open the public hearing, ask if the applicant, I presume, is here, or the representative.
I guess we have a number of people with the applicant and representatives. You can go ahead and state your name.
And then let me ask how much time you'd like.
Yes, my name is Kim Rival with Gaines and Stacy, appearing on behalf of the applicant. We would like 10 minutes if possible and reserve five for rebuttal.
Okay, please proceed.
Is it good afternoon? I think it might be. So, good afternoon. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Honorable Commissioners. I have a PowerPoint as well. Great, we can advance to the next slide right away. Thank you. All right, so as you heard from staff, the project background, uh, this is a single-family residence that was approved by the city of Dana Point in 2022. The house complies 100% with the LCP. This is not, uh...
I was just gonna say...
This is not the right PowerPoint. This is... My apologies.
I guess you had two items today.
We had another item that was moved to consent, yes.
All right, just give us a moment. We'll flip it out.
Yeah, no worries. Great, okay. Single-family home approved by the city of Dana Point in 2022, complies 100% with the LCP. The coastal commission appealed the item. The applicants waited more than two years for this de novo hearing today. We're very excited to be here. We've worked very closely with staff over the last several months in particular, and as you could see on those eight items put up on the screen and the design changes, we basically, the applicants agreed to seven and a half of them. So we have one requested change, and that is to special condition 1F. Next slide, please. So, special condition 1F prohibits a garage entirely. It instead limits this to an open carport. Specifically, a maximum of two structural sheer walls may be constructed perpendicular to the shore. The carport shall not be converted to a garage or other enclosed space at any time. Next slide. This is really an unprecedented special condition. It would certainly be the very first of its kind for this whole community. Breakaway panels and garage doors are both allowed and even encouraged by the LCP and FEMA. Again, this would be the only home of approximately 200 without an enclosed garage. It's also inconsistent with sea level rise guidance that promotes development adaptability. I'll talk about that in a minute. Next slide. So what are the facts? This house is designed for a 75-year lifespan. In fact, there were nine coastal engineering reports prepared. By GeoSoil's third-party review was conducted by Moffett and Nickel. Sea level rise, it's slow-moving. It happens gradually. Even with wave uprush and storm surge, there would be advanced warning of water approaching the house at least a minimum of several days. There is less than a 1% chance of the ocean water reaching where the garage doors would be over the next 75 years. Where the garage doors would be are set back almost 177 feet from where the mean-high tide line is today. We have other special conditions to which the applicant agrees that require mean-high tide line monitoring, removal of development, and assumption of risks. The sea level rise guidance encourages a project's ability to adapt over time, and staff appears to be wanting to redesign the project now for the lowest probability event some unknown time in the future. The applicant would prefer to be allowed to adapt the house to sea level rise over time. Next slide. This is a graphic that shows the distance to the garage from the mean-high tide line. The red line shows that it's almost 177 feet from the mean-high tide line to where the garage doors would be. The blue line shows it's almost 150 feet from the mean-high tide line to the seaward side of the garage. The ocean water would first need to travel across the beach under about 70 feet of the home through at least two dozen caissons to actually reach the seaward edge of the garage. There would be significant and obvious advance warning of water approaching the garage. Next slide, please. So what are the problems with the carport? I'm just gonna run through this list. It does not serve a public purpose. It does not increase blue water views. It's designed for a less than 1% likely event. It's inconsistent with, in fact, it goes way beyond GeoSoil's and Moffett and Nickel's recommendations. It's inconsistent with LCP and FEMA, which both allow breakaway panels and garage doors. It's incompatible with surrounding development and neighborhood character. It leaves the property vulnerable from a security standpoint. This is important. Just on October 2nd, the district manager, who's in charge of all these homes, emailed all the residents. There were many car break-ins and vandalism, and he was advising everyone to please keep your cars secure in your garage and locked at all times. It also disallows the applicant from adapting the project to sea level rise over time. Next slide, please. So we've come up with what we believe to be a very reasonable compromise solution. We're calling it a modified garage. No breakaway panels on the seaward side. So in the addendum, just quickly, staff states the applicant agreed to eliminate the breakaway panels, quote, "due to high risk of wave attack and dense development nearby." This is not true. The applicant did agree to eliminate the breakaway panels, but in the hopes of reaching a compromise solution on this garage, something we could agree on. So there would be no wall on the back of the garage area. It would allow the applicant to have garage doors. Again, they would be about 177 feet away from where the mean-high tide line is today. The garage doors would be open if the ocean water reaches the garage, allowing water to flow freely underneath. So this could be done with a wet switch, a flood sensor, and/or smart home technology. This is all proven technology. Or the good old-fashioned way, and the owner gets out there and opens up the garage doors. Obviously, the owner will be intrinsically motivated to ensure that the garage doors are open if ocean water reaches the garage area. The applicants already agreed to store nothing in the garage except for vehicles. This is also very consistent with sea level rise policy guidance adaptation strategies, and it improves visual compatibility along Beach Road by allowing the garage doors. Next slide, please. So does the modified garage comply with the LCP? It does. The LCP specifically says for detached, single-family homes, you should have two spaces, quote, "in a garage." In addition, the provisions for flood hazard reduction, garages may be constructed at the existing beach elevation and below the base flood elevation. Next, the modified garage also complies with FEMA standards. FEMA Technical Bulletin Number Nine states garage doors are subject to the NFIP requirements to break away under base flood conditions. Standard residential garage doors may be considered breakaway panels. So, in the very unlikely event that the garage doors are not opened to accommodate ocean water, the door sections will break away as they're designed. Staff does state a concern that this would potentially happen over and over again, contributing to marine debris. But that's not the case, because we have special condition number seven that would require the garage doors to be removed if this happens one time. So it would not be a repeated occurrence. Next slide, please. The modified garage also complies with the draft 2024 update of the coastal commission's sea level rise policy guidance. The goal: Plan and locate new development to be safe from hazards, not require protection over its entire lifespan, and be protective of coastal resources. So let's see what we're doing here. The applicant has already incorporated adequate setbacks, incorporated FEMA and Coastal Act flood protection measures, raised the first-floor habitable space, agreed to remove a removal plan special condition, waived shoreline protection, agreed to assumption of risk. The applicant has done all these things, so now we're asking that you let him be able to adapt. That brings us to the guidance chapters six and seven. I'll just direct your attention to the second and third quotes here. Development that is safe from hazards and is resource-protective may be possible if certain adaptation strategies are used to modify the project over time. Next, in the context of sea level rise planning, if the likelihood of impacts suspected to increase with rising sea level, it may be necessary to design the initial project for some amount of sea level rise, but to also include design flexibility that will allow future project changes or modifications to prevent impacts. So, next slide, please. Adaptation is not about designing an onerously conservative project now to withstand every 1% possible occurrence, potentially many years away. Instead, adaptation is about adjusting the design and modifying, removing portions of the project over time. The open carport suggestion, we believe, is extreme and doesn't allow any flexibility whatsoever. Whereas the modified garage suggestion would allow the garage doors at least for a period of time. In conclusion, we respectfully request that you please approve the project with revised special condition number 1F. We have people here to answer questions. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ms. Rival. All right, so how many speakers, additional speakers do we have on this item?
I believe we have three speakers. Uh, we have two in the room. I will start with Dave Battani and then Mandy Sackett.
Okay, and these are people commenting on...
Yes.
Okay, so each of these speakers will have two minutes.
Dave Battani.
Hello, everyone. Well, I'm a homeowner on Beach Road. The new requirements to have an open carport instead of an enclosed garage is really ridiculous and serves no real purpose. Our new homes were built in 2019 and all have enclosed garages along with every single other resident in our community. Homeowner followed the rules put in place by your very own certified LCP. What could have possibly changed enough to require homes being built five years later to have open carports? If new builds are obligated to have carports, then every single other resident is obligated to open their garages and turn them into carports. Next, the coastal commission should provide a stipend to homeowner for it. Neighbor five years ago with new builds did not need to have it. Neither should new builders build now. New homes in our community are selling for, you know, above $5 or $6 million or more, depending on the size and remodel and, you know, all the other amenities that they have. And no logical buyer with the million-dollar spending on their new home would want to build something, you know, in that expensive, that has an open carport. These homeowners also drive luxury cars. Parking a luxury vehicle in an open carport leaves the vehicle susceptible to theft and break-in, as well as susceptible to the open element of living on the beach. Why on earth would anyone with common sense spend several million dollars on a house that has zero safety measure for their vehicles? You should feel confident and safe in parking your own vehicle at your home, not worried about whether you lift your car door unlocked or... Did I continue? I have one more paragraph. At the end, we continue a substantial amount of money to the county by way of property tax. Coastal commissioners should always want homeowners to continue to build new homes and invest more into their properties, and that obviously increases in value and pay even more toward taxes. Coastal commissioners should have a wonderful relationship with homeowners rather than...
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Mandy Sackett, and then Rick Watson.
I have a PowerPoint.
I guess.
Um, Mandy Sackett with the Surf Rider Foundation. Hello, Chair, Heart Commissioners. Surf Rider does not support new development at Beach Road in Dana Point. The houses that exist there today are subject to present-day coastal hazards. There is frequent wave overtopping during high tides and swell events. There is also rampant illegal, unpermitted armoring all along this neighborhood. It needs to be dealt with. They're jeopardizing a beloved beach and surfable waves, especially as seas rise. We have aerial images here to demonstrate how hazardous this location is. These images do not depict the subject a lot, but shows just up the road from the proposed development. Here you can see wave uprush during a high-wave event in 2021. Next slide. Note the people on the decks there in the middle two houses. Next slide. Who were very lucky that they did not get swept into the ocean. Next slide. You can also see what happens to empty lots in this location on the right. The people on the slide ended up running from this wave that ran up onto the empty lot. We think you should deny this project and set a precedent for the dozens of appeals that, for new development at Beach Road that will become mean before you in the near future. This is the first of many. Historically, the commission is considered caisson foundations to be shoreline armoring, and new development shall not be relying on shoreline armoring or located in hazardous locations. Just because there's existing development in this area does not mean we have to perpetuate it. If approved, we do strongly support staff's special condition seven, which requires removal of private development in public trust land as the mean-high tide line migrates landward. Um, we see this as a critical condition for the commission in incorporating public trust protections into permitting, and we commend staff and this commission for setting that important precedent to protect public resources. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and Richard Watson or Rick Watson?
Is he on Zoom?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Uh, well, now after three years of the permit process, it appears that coastal staff is completely changing the rules. They're ignoring their own certified LCP and demand the elimination of a safe, secure, enclosed garage designed with breakaway walls to adapt to future wave action. This adaptable engineered design is exactly the requirement clearly called out in the LCP, also approved and required by FEMA. If coastal wants to change the requirement regarding garage design, the proper, fair, and legal way is to amend the LCP so property owners understand this requirement at the beginning of this long and costly process. This action is changing the requirements and moving the goalposts at the last minute after years of costly design and engineering. Why have an LCP if it's going to be ignored by the parties who certify it? Please show me whether this is considered fair or legal. This action is not a design regulation as suggested by the coastal staff. It will cause monetary damage to me personally and to the property value immediately and forever. I would have never purchased my property if this unprecedented no-enclosed-garage requirement was listed in the LCP. Be honest with yourself. Who on the commission would desire a home without a garage? I would suggest that this condition, if required, will be a legal issue for coastal. This unprecedented arbitrary last-minute deviation from the certified LCP will financially damage the half dozen approved property owners now frozen and repeal on Beach Road. This group is well organized and not willing to accept this abuse of authority moving forward. We would suggest that if coastal wants to maintain respect and change the rules, do it properly legally by amending the LCP. do it properly legally by amending the LCP and not using the appeal value from the property owner in exchange for a permit. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. All our remaining speakers are with the applicant.
Okay, all right. So I'll return to Ms. Rybel and ask if she needs additional time for rebuttal at this time? Or if you'd like to reserve that.
So I guess I'd like to reserve it. I failed to introduce our team, though. We have the homeowner here, Babak Falazada. We also have Dave Skelly from GeoSoils. And the architect Charles Heintz is here as well. And I just want to mention too, we did provide staff with red line, a proposed red line to the special condition that we would find acceptable.
Okay, thank you very much. Is Mr. Watson, who just spoke, somehow have an ownership interest in this?
My understanding, he is another Beach Road neighbor.
Neighbor, okay. That was unclear by his comments, but thank you for clarifying. All right, bring it back to Mr. Amatei for any further comments or clarification. Mr. Schwang.
Thank you, Chair Heart. So in terms of the garage, of course, that's been the big debate here, obviously. We did address all of the issues that were raised here today extensively in the staff report addendum, but let me just go over the reasons that we outlined in the addendum. First, you know, under a weak or moderate wave uprush situation, the garage doors could obstruct the flow of water from the beach toward the road with potential adverse effects on shoreline processes. Under moderate to strong wave attack, the garage doors could break away into sections and drift into the marine environment and become a marine debris issue. We're also concerned that the enclosed garage increases the likelihood of storage of unsecured and hazardous items other than vehicles, and that will become a water quality issue. The garage enclosed with the street side door would also obstruct blue water views, which we know that's, you know, limited at times, but it is a better condition from a view standpoint than having a garage door in place. And then, of course, there's concern about the wet switch or smart sensor technology, which the applicant is proposing to use. You know, we're concerned about the reliability of that, especially over the long term. One of the speakers mentioned they're concerned that, you know, staff isn't following the LCP with regard to this issue. The applicant showed some language from the zoning code related to this, suggesting that an enclosed garage was a requirement here. That was not the certified LCP language. The certified LCP language says that a covered space is required, not enclosed. So we believe what we're doing here is consistent with that requirement. In terms of, you know, updating the city's LCP, we did work extensively with the city on changes to their code having to do with the wave uprush and flooding issues. We got to a point where the city decided they didn't want to proceed with it that time, and they withdrew the amendment. So we agree with city that some updates are needed, but that hasn't that hasn't been carried forward. As far as the hazards issues related to the garage, our engineer certainly doesn't agree with the characterization that the applicants made, and Jeremy Smith is available to speak to that as needed. And I think our executive director also has some comments.
Thank you. Billy, I was wondering if you could pull up the staff presentation one more time? Billy, could you pull up the staff presentation and show I just the slide from the staff presentation that had the video? I know we can't show the video, but I just wanted to put that up on the screen. And I just want to make kind of step back for a second and think a little bit about, talk a little bit about Beach Road in general and how vulnerable and hazardous this entire stretch of coast is. It's not the only place like this on this coast. This commission has had projects in front of it, several in the last year, that have been in similarly hazardous conditions. And this is something that this commission will struggle with moving forward. And, and, you know, as Director Schwang said, like, we agree that the LCPs in all these areas need to be updated to address these areas. That's going to take time and it's challenging, both politically and just, you know, figuring out what to do with these areas is a hard thing. Could you advance it a little bit?
Hey, can you just, can you just address one thing while you're talking, which is that the LCP exists, but this is now our jurisdiction by the appeal. This is De novo.
So yes, the commission has taken jurisdiction over this permit. We are recommending approval of the De novo CDP as conditioned in the staff report. So I just wanted, you know, this was a really hard one for staff. We struggled over this for a while because of the hazardous nature of this location. And I want to acknowledge some of the things that were said in terms of, you know, the removal conditions and all those things, the carport idea. All of this is our way to try and square allowing a development in this incredibly known hazardous condition. I mean, you look at these houses and the idea that it's a 1% event that's going to affect these houses, I just, I don't think we agree with. I think we know that there are storms and sea level rise affecting these areas now that will just increase in intensity into the future. And so, you know, that is really what is changing the landscape here. You know, we have to adapt to those conditions. We didn't require these kinds of things in previous locations because we didn't know as much as we know now. We need to adapt the way that we're thinking about these things and that. So you're right, there aren't requirements or this is, this is a new approach about carports and this is a new thing. But we think it is appropriate, given everything we know and the concerns we have about marine debris, water quality, all those things. So we do, you know, just because other houses don't have one doesn't mean that we won't approve them in the future and shouldn't be considering those kinds of, you know, those kinds of adaptations. So, and I, you know, again, part of it too, and specifically to the carport, but, you know, these, there are removal conditions that are associated with this permit and part of what, and I think adapting in time might be appropriate. That's how the conditions are written. But including the garage door, just sort of psychologically makes you think of it as a permanent space, right? That has, you know, and I, we have condition, you know, they would recommend conditions to not include hazardous materials and things of that nature, of course. I just, you know, the, the chances that that would remain 20 years down the line when the house has been sold, somebody else is living there, it seems like an enforcement nightmare to me. So I think we stand by our recommendation to keep it as a carport and, but also just acknowledge how difficult these particular houses in these types of locations are and that we need to be forward thinking and trying to move the ball a little bit so that, you know, we are adapting to the conditions that we know are current now and then will be worse in the future. So I'll close.
Thank you. Does that conclude staff's response?
That concludes staff remarks.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you. All right, I'll return to the commission and ask if there are any questions or comments. I do have a few as well. So we'll start with Commissioner Wilson, then Commissioner Rice.
This is a question. I have a quick question for the staff. When was this property purchased? Do you have, do we have that information in this last?
Based on the records that I have, it's 2021.
In 2021? Okay, is that in, well, we, I mean, there's, I just want to, in 2021, it looks like the property was being used as a thoroughfare for the delivery of Beach, of Large Rock or Vetment? Is that under this property owner or previous property owner?
Based on our records, it's the previous property owner.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. So there was, in 2019, that's what we heard testimony, then 2019, there were five new homes built. Is that true? Is that true?
I don't, I don't have those records available, but the city did approve quite a few CDPs in the 20 teens going through 2019, and those were, those were not appealed.
Okay. I mean, and this is just sort of as a comment, the Beach Road issue in terms of the concern that sea level rise will impact the, I guess, water and sewer and other utilities over, you know, and I'm just wondering, is there, is, has there been any efforts to aggregate those, create a district? We've been talking about these climate resilience districts and, and so that neighborhoods have the opportunity to create a mechanism to fund their own, their own defenses for sea level rise. Has that been happening in this? This seems like a pretty resourced community that could do that. And so that when disaster arrives, happens, they're not asking for state and federal as much state and federal assistance, especially for these, these locations where the properties are of such high value?
There is a district of sorts in place, but it is, its scope is limited. It's mostly to the maintenance of utilities and recently protection of the road. But as far as protect, you know, addressing the hazards presented to the homes, the district doesn't appear to have any authority in that, in that way. The ideas that you're talking about certainly make a lot of sense, but here, but to our knowledge, they haven't made moves to do something like that.
Do we have any one from the district here today as part of this deliberation?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Okay, because I'm wondering, is the district actually planning for these changes in, you know, hazard mitigation moving forward? Is this something that they're aware of and is part of their district? You know, in terms of like what they're charging or fees or taxes or whatever it is that they're getting from their constituents?
Yeah, that's a great question. And first, I'll just note that there's a special condition 16, which does require the applicant to participate in district activities in the future related to sea level rise adaptation, should that happen. I will note that pretty recently that this district, it expanded its authority to protect the road and any erosion or flooding damage to the road. So that's been a pretty recent development. And I will also note that Orange County Parks, OC Parks, did just release a report or a study called, the acronym is SOCRCRIS, but South Orange County, you know, for the area, they're, they're going to be doing some sea level rise adaptation. And they did note the district is one of the stakeholders. So that will be for Beach Norishmane along Capistrano Beach, spanning from Dohini Beach down to the San Clemente border. So yes, the district is one of the stakeholders and it's our hopes that they will be more involved.
Thanks. And just lastly, I know some people make some assumptions about the demographics of this commission and what, what our life experiences are. And I will say there are several of us on this commission that do not have garages. So I just want to be, I just, it is not ubiquitous for everybody to, to have that as a, as a something that they can take advantage of. So thanks.
Commissioner Rice.
Yeah, thank you. I was also thinking about the various infrastructure systems that are serving, would be serving this home and this neighborhood community. So a couple of things. So there is a special district. And I heard you mention that it is related to maintenance of the roads. And then what about other utility? What about utilities generally? Gas, water, sewer, those fall under potentially other?
So my understanding is that I think it is the water system is municipal. And I think the gas and some other utilities are private. And so the district does not have any involvement with this.
All right. And then so, and I believe the city has done a vulnerability assessment. And I guess so, one of the things I'm thinking about is, you know, what is the status of the integrity of those various systems, some which are public, some which are private? And to what degree the city or that private utility or that district is obligated to maintain those systems if they are, if their integrity is threatened by whatever, whether it's a slide like up in Palos Verdes or through sea level rise or storm surge? Any, any comment on that and or what we know about the level of vulnerability of those really critical infrastructure systems?
Yeah, so our understanding is that in the sea level rise vulnerability assessment, the city has looked at, you know, they've definitely examined their utility and infrastructure systems. And in terms of, you know, some of those private systems, utility systems, we're not sure what the obligation is, but our understanding is that the city will take measures to protect those. So the water and sewer systems in this area. And yes, the city did flag them as highly vulnerable.
Okay. My other question has to do with condition seven, which requires, which would require the property owner to relocate or move the structures in the event of the mean high tideline moving up or what have you. So, and we've, we've, we've included conditions like that for other approvals, but I've always been uncomfortable with a lack of knowability, predictability of how that actually happens or where's the hook? And or where's even the funding to make that happen? And on, yeah, I'm just, how do we, how do we anticipate ever enforcing that?
If I may, so one of the tweaks we made in this case is we included a prior to issuance condition, condition 1J for a prior to issuance removal plan that will detail with a narrative, you know, exactly what sort of potential obstacles they'll encounter in removal. And so whether that means full removal of the piles, which is usually, you know, just it's physically tough to do that. You know, if the piles go down 25 feet into the soils, it, you know, they need to detail exactly what they'll be doing, if they'll be cutting it off at the scour elevation or if they'll potentially have to also use coffered dams because, you know, this will become, you know, a wet area, submerged area. So we are asking for that sort of narrative in addition to this condition. And one other tweak we also made in this condition is to make sure that the mean high tideline, which will be reviewed by state lands, the mean high tide line survey in condition five, that that will feed into this condition, condition seven, and really give us a good sense of, okay, this should be removed now. So we're not going to be deferring at that time to the state lands commission and figuring out if a lease needs to happen or, you know, that's just going to be out of the equation at that point. So it's going to be for us a much more sure thing that, okay, mean high tide line is at the home. Now you need to submit a CDP application to ensure that the development goes through. So remove all the development, so.
Okay. And then in that plan that we're requiring, do we also require that there's some estimate of the cost in today's dollars to actually execute on that plan?
So we do not have any sort of condition requiring proof of bonds or anything like that, but we did talk to some of the industry leaders in pile removal based on our staff geologist's recommendation. And they did mention that, you know, it would be in, you know, at least the six figure mark, but who knows what it will be in however.
Talking today's dollars.
Right. But it is, you know, in order of magnitude, less than the full value of the property, but it is usually prohibitively expensive to fully remove all of the development. So we did agree per the condition here that it could be, the piles at least can be abandoned and placed below the scour elevation where they wouldn't be exposed. But that's, that's because of the costs associated with that. So that was one way we were able to work with that issue.
I had one small addition. I just wanted to point out, we made an observation. I think our engineer Jeremy Smith made in his memo that that one tool that some regulatory agencies in other states, and I mean, we have used it here, but not in this sense yet, is, you know, to require a bond of some type or some surety, financial surety that, you know, for future removal. And so the idea being if in the future it's time to remove it based on the physical conditions and there's no funding to do that, then a public agency could step in and use those funds. We have not, we did not require that, or we didn't recommend requiring that in this case, but is something we could consider, the commission could consider here or in the future. Because I agree with you, there's a lot of concern about how this actually happens. How does it work? And so I think we're, you know, the removal plan will be important piece. Tying that in with the mean high tide surveys that, that we review. So we feel pretty confident, well, we can be up to speed on how things are going at this house, but it, it, we did not address the financial concerns.
Okay. Well, to me, I, I, I think that's, well, one, I think that in that plan, we should require some estimate of the potential, of the cost in today's dollars. So there's some cognizance of what a property owner is obligating themselves to. And I would, I, I think that we need to begin considering, how do we actually create the mechanism to assure that there's funding to actually execute on that? And, and I think that probably there's consideration in there with regards to, to the degree we can forecast a timeline, that maybe that's part of the consideration, but it just, it, it feels like an empty promise.
Commissioner Rice, I think that's an excellent recommendation to include a, a cost estimate as part of the removal plan. So we would change our recommendation to include that as part of that special condition.
Okay. And then whatever that potentially talk about, yeah. I think that was, I didn't really get an answer actually to the question on the vulnerability assessment. I did get an answer to the question, but I didn't really phrase the question correctly. What do we have anybody who, who is familiar with that vulnerability assessment in terms of the utilities that are serving these properties in terms of their integrity and or vulnerability risk timeline wise? In terms of what we know about sea level rise and wave run up and, and storm surge, et cetera?
I, our staff engineer, Jeremy Smith, has a lot of familiarity with the background documents on this. I'm not sure, Jeremy, if you can provide any additional details about that?
Yes, Commissioner, the city did evaluate this area in its sea level rise vulnerability assessment. Although I, I will double check right now, but I do not believe it identified any public utilities on this road, suggesting that these utilities are privately operated and maintained.
So the vulnerability assessment does not include assessment of the private utilities?
I do not believe so. I can check and get back to you.
So that could be gas, power, what have you?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner O'Malley?
Good question. Thanks. Perhaps this is directed to someone on staff, but the Surf Rider comments mentioned that caissons historically had been treated as shoreline armoring. And I'm wondering if you could address that, that statement?
I can start, but I, yes, I think in, there's a, there's different approaches and how to think about caissons. And there are cases where we have considered, or at least my understanding is we have considered caissons to be shoreline protective devices. So we didn't take that approach here, but we have in other cases. Do you want to add anything?
Well, and, and I guess what I would add to that is under this particular LCP, the, the LCP actually requires new development like this to be elevated on caissons. So that, that wasn't then sort of an option for us to consider.
I would also underscore again, you know, we hope to be working with the city on a LCP amendment. And as we've come up today, there are, there are multiple things, I think, in there that, given where we are and the current hazards and the expected hazards, you know, we need to dig in with them on sort of what those appropriate policies are, because they're, the ones that are in there are pretty old.
Thank you. I just, I just, I agree. That's a big one. So that's my, my comment, question. Thanks.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yeah, I'll be, I'll try to be brief. One, the comment regarding sea level rise, I just think that that's a little bit of a mischaracterization about sea level rise and how it's occurring, because there's also storm surge and king tides that if you couple those together can have massive impacts on coastlines and coastal properties. And also with the way that this house is being designed, even though the caissons can provide some barrier for protection, the channelization of the water under the, the house, under those kinds of conditions can really speed up not only the flow of the water, but the impact that it will have on any structure that's beneath it, which could also not only damage, you know, if there was a breakaway garage, but the area under the house, you know, because the water is going to hit whatever barrier there is, it's going to reflect off of that, which could also damage the property in essence. And, and if it were to be a breakaway garage, I just have concern, not only with the pollution, but if the property owner is concerned about the, is concerned about the cars there beneath it. I mean, whatever is there is going to be flowing back and forth for a while. It's not just going to go out to the ocean. So likely damage whatever is in the garage as well. And in the absence of that, if there is knowledge of the storm is coming, I mean, one would want to get their vehicle out of there whatever way possible, but by having it not be obstructed, that actually allows for greater flow out onto the street if it, if, you know, the water is, and the flow is that intense, which would not only reduce erosion, but then it would provide, you know, it would provide less impact on that home, because the water would have somewhere to channelize and go. And so I actually think this is much more protective of not only the beach, but also the property. And so I think this is a good, you know, approach in terms of trying to find a balance to allow this construction to occur and also try to, you know, maintain coastal resources. Because, I mean, personally, I think people should be, you know, moving away from building on the beach just because of everything that we're seeing happening up and down the state. But obviously, the coastal commission staff has done the best that they can to try to see how we can at least move this forward in a way that I think many of us aren't really comfortable with, but, you know, recognizes the potential for takings and the fact that this is, you know, property that's been purchased. And these folks want to move forward with development. So I think that what the staff is offering is a good compromise. And we're going to continue to try to see, you know, how we can address sea level rise and development in the coastal zone moving forward, because it's, it's real. Like climate change is real and sea level rises real, and we have to take it seriously.
Commissioner Skolontay?
Thank you, Chair. So I'll just, I, I agree with the fellow commissioners. I really don't, don't, I mean, it is, it is quite, quite a challenge that is only going to get worse and worse as time. And, and I don't, it's not like a lot of time, as we can see in the East Coast. I mean, these are unprecedented times. And I think week by week, we're going to continue be beating records due to, due to climate change and, and the unexpected disasters. So every time I see those like beachfront houses that are, you know, half covered by water when these things happen, I'm always like, what is it going to take to, for us to sort of get to the point to say, well, we just can't build there anymore? So I really appreciate what staff has done in order to allow this house to be built and for these owners to enjoy that property. But in the long term, I'm very concerned about especially this, this stretch of, of Orange County, but really up and down the coast, where all these houses are just so close to the ocean. So, thank you.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. I'm going to start with the question that's bothering me the most, and I may need to refer back to Ms. Rible, but I, I did an ex parte on this. And during the ex parte, Ms. Rible told me that the house is 150 foot landward of the mean high tideline. Yet these pictures, everything that's been shown here, I mean, you're not talking about mean height, but none, none of that was discussed. It's, is this a regular incident, what we're seeing in these slides, Mr. Amete or Mr. Schwang? And can you describe where the mean high tideline is currently?
So based on our understanding, the, the latest survey, we have the mean high tide line from 2021. It's about 90 feet away from the patio strain line, so the most seaward edge of development. It is about 150 feet from the, where the seaward breakaway panel wall would have gone. So on the seaward side of the garage and about 176 feet from the garage door on the street side. I think that, that's correct.
But if I may to, I'm sorry, just finish from what Mr. Amete was saying. I mean, what you see in the pictures is, is not obviously the mean high tideline. That is a mean high tide. That doesn't include hired high tides, king high tides, and then storm surge and other types of wave action that can go up farther on the beach. So I don't think we have a, I, I don't think we know at this point, or at least I don't, I'm, where the storms have come up on this particular property. But we will, we would expect along this whole stretch, that all of these houses are vulnerable to some, especially during storms, would be vulnerable to some wave action and possibly some flooding.
Yeah, I guess. You know, it's one thing to think about a house that's 150 feet from the mean high tideline and then to see, pretty much all of our presentation has shown the impact during a storm surge, hot, king tide of this, to this area. How often does this kind of a, what you're showing on the slides, how often does that occur here? Is that a regular occurrence every winter? Or what's the situation there?
I'd like to ask Jeremy Smith, maybe he's available and can come and answer that question.
Yes, Chair. So the, the largest contribution to the sort of recent wave run up risk that the community is seeing is, is largely due to the sort of acute erosion that's caused the waves to break much closer to the homes. These events that we're getting these aerials for have essentially happened almost every year since around 2019. And they're, they happen during high tide events where large swell coincides with that, that high tide. And they're not even necessarily king tide events. Potentially they could be, you know, a high tide and maybe some contribution of additional surge from like a low pressure system or a hurricane. But they have essentially happened almost every year since 2019, largely due to this beach erosion, which we don't see evidence of stopping anytime soon.
Yeah. I mean, presumably with sea level rise is just going to get worse. I, i- is this house insurable? Can I ask the Ms. Rible, do you know?
Understanding it is insurable because it's built to FEMA standards.
But you, that's, that's an understanding, but you don't currently have a policy or?
The answer is yes.
You do?
The homeowner is telling me yes.
Okay.
Yes. Okay. And we, we do have Dave Skelly here, who might be able to address your recent question as well.
Sure. Because I'm, I mean, I just want to tell you, I did, I don't feel that the, during the ex parte, our conversation really addressed the reality of what you're seeing here, which is, you know, I don't, I like to hear the whole picture. Just because something, a house 150 feet from the mean high tideline, at the end of the day, if you're having this kind of impacts on that neighborhood and at this lot on a regular basis, every season, which are just going to get worse, that creates a different picture. But I'm, I'd like to hear from you, sir.
Yes. My name's Steve Skelly. I'm with Geos soils, a coastal engineer. Just to step back a little bit, I agree with your technical expert, your coastal engineer, that there can be a house designed and safely sited here. When you see those pictures, you're drawn to the splash from the wave run up hitting your shore protection or that was mostly shore protection. It can go really high. The one thing, that's what draws your eye. The elevation of the ocean is much lower. So if there was a path, which you're creating with the design of this development to go through and underneath, you wouldn't see as much spray and splash. It wouldn't be quite as dramatic. And, and that's how the structure is designed. We would know a, a week ahead of time if a huge swell was going to come and you would know, you know, the tides for the next hundred years. So when you see these events, you can take your car out of your garage or raise your door. So it's, it's an adaptable thing.
Right. And we've heard that part. So I don't, I think that's, that's
One more point, please, Chair. First of all, a lot of this says that sea level rise is going to be five, six, seven, eight feet soon. I'm, I believe in sea level rise.
You know what, sir? The only thing is since we closed public comment, I, I really appreciate it though. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. I mean, I, I have to say, I'm struggling with this too, because all these other houses have garages. I mean, I have to start by saying from my perspective, there is no way I would build a house here. I can't even fathom it, especially after we've just seen on the East Coast and what we're going to see tonight and tomorrow. It, you know, you, that's what this neighborhood, it's inevitably going to, going to happen to this area. And I just, it's hard for me to understand. But I guess if it's insurable, I mean, you, you can approach it that way. But it just, I mean, I have to say that Surf Rider's perspective on this is, is, is a pretty good one, and it's just a really terrible place for a house. But, you know, I understand the LCP and I understand what our jurisdiction is. And given that, you know, we have to consider what the rights are of the homeowner, but you know, I'm just very concerned about it saying that having a garage door that is, you know, I, to me, that seems like a, kind of a small issue. And I, I just am having a hard time going, you know, if it's such a big deal to the homeowner. I mean, the garage door goes up. I mean, I kind of can see their point. I mean, there's a storm, the garage door goes up, they're not going to have their cars there. I just, I'm, I'm struggling with that. So I'll go back to staff. I mean, I just, I'm just not sure why a garage door should be kind of where we go to the mat on this.
Obviously, it's up to the commission to use its discretion here. I think where we came down as staff and we, we've done, I, I think, I hope a thorough job in explaining why we got to the recommendation that we did, is, is that, you know, if we could snap our fingers and have everybody have carports along here, I think we would. We think it's the right, it is a good adaptation strategy. And, and actually, I think Commissioner Cummings did a great job of talking about some of the technical reasons in terms of providing a, a place for the water to go, not having as much reflection. Like there, there are actual, you know, scientific and, and technical reasons, we think, to keep it as a carport. So, you know, that's where we landed on as staff. And, and again, the debris component, I think if you put a garage door on, the temptation will be to, to store stuff in there.
It's not that, Kate, it's that, that a garage door is so easy to open. Why would you?
If you're in town, yeah. I mean, but
And you don't
But also what if electricity goes? I mean, there's so many things that could go wrong, I think was our sense. And, and we didn't feel that it made a lot of sense for, you know, to spend staff resources reviewing a system or to worry about it as an enforcement thing. And so this felt like a reasonable adaptation strategy that we should require or that, you know, we would recommend requiring here. But again, it's of course the commission's discretion.
Okay. I mean, I, I just, to me, I really appreciate all the staff perspective. But for me, I just don't think it's going, with going to the mat, getting involved in everything that, you know, is likely to happen as a result of, or taking that position over a garage door that would automatically open presumably. I mean, they would have to prove that. They would have to show that technology. I mean, that would be required for them to even have the garage door. And you're saying it doesn't exist now. So it's likely, you know.
We're not aware of a system, but there could be one. I think the point is, is this, how, you know, we would have to review it. It would take a lot of Jeremy's time to try to understand, how does the system work? What are the fail safes? It would take a lot of effort on our part to see that it's working. And then we would have to check, are they using it? Is it still functional? All those things. It just, it, it seemed, there's so many points of failure, I think, when we were looking at it. So many possibilities that it wouldn't work, that it didn't, it did not make sense from a sea level rise adaptation perspective to, to go that direction. But if, if the commission did want to go that direction, then there, that would be the, there would be, we could add a, you know, you could add a requirement that add, had a review component. So if that's something you want to explore, let us
Well, I'll just say, I have a feeling I'm in the minority anyway on that point. So we'll see what happens. So I've concluded my comments and go to ask if someone would like to make a motion on this. Anybody?
I'll make the motion if I can find it.
It's on page seven. Commissioner Rice.
I move that the commission approve coastal development permit number A dash five dash DPT dash twenty-two dash zero zero three seven pursuant to the staff recommendation, but I want to add a, I want to flesh out that condition number seven with regards to a cost assessment.
Yes, we've amended our staff recommendation to include a, a cost assessment. So that's now part of the staff recommendation. If you have any specifics, you could articulate that.
Like what more specifics would you like?
I don't think we need anymore, but if you had something, you know, so I think we would add a cost estimate as one of the required components of the removal plan.
Okay, that's it. That's my motion. And I, I'm asking for a yes.
Okay, can we just restate the motion then one more time?
I move that the commission approve coastal development permit number A dash five dash DPT dash twenty-two dash zero zero three seven as amended to include the cost estimate as part of condition.
You can just say pursuant to the staff recommendation because staff has already modified their recommendation.
Pursuant to the staff recommendation.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Commissioner. Do we have a second?
A second, and I apologize, but one last question for staff. Was there a consideration for a, sort of like plexiglass or something like that at the option for, because I, I'm still, I, I agree with the view shed issue, hasn't really been discussed here, but I was just wondering, you know, on the, on the seaward side, uh, like a half plexiglass or something like, was there anything consideration of that in terms of the protection of the property that would also allow for that, you know, that doesn't, wouldn't promote the storage of the, all the stuff? Because I get the part about the future enforcement issue. I mean, it's just like why we went through issues around LED lot, you know, billboards or whatever. It's like, once you say LED, then all of a sudden you have to, you have to enforce all these different things about it, right? And so you say no. And likewise, in this case, if, if you allow for a garage in the space and you're worried and we have concerns about the hazardous material storage and all these other things, it's like, this is a way to mitigate for that piece of this. Is there, was there a consideration for just some sort of plexiglass or something like that to deal with this?
So, so yes, there was consideration of some sort of transparent material for the garage door. But I think, you know, Jeremy Smith can speak to this, but there was an issue with identifying, uh, you know, an applicable or relevant material that would, uh, could both be resistant to flooding conditions and be transparent and not contribute to marine debris.
I appreciate that. Thanks. And I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Um, could we have a roll call vote, please, on this?
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Cummings.
Aye.
Cummings, yes. Commissioner Escalante.
Yes.
Escalante, yes. Commissioner Loenberg.
Yes.
Loenberg, yes. Commissioner Nussum.
Yes.
Nussum, yes. Commissioner Rice.
Yes.
Rice, yes. Commissioner Uranga. Uranga, no. Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner Aguirre.
Yes.
Aguirre, yes. Chair Hart.
Yes.
Hart, yes. The vote is nine yes, one no.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. That item is concluded. We're going to adjourn for lunch. It's about 10 after 1:00 right now. Will take a, a little over a half hour and we'll come back at 1:45 if that works for everyone. Sound okay? We are going to pick up the meeting with item 12B, I believe. Palkovic, San Clemente. Mr. Schwang.
Uh, yes, that's correct. Thank you. And, uh, Vincent Lee with our Long Beach office is going to do the staff presentation. We do have a staff PowerPoint if we could pull that up. And Vin, whenever you're ready, please begin.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This item is 12B. This is a coastal development permit application requesting after the fact authorization for the conversion of a pre-existing five-unit residential structure into a 6144 square feet duplex, as well as proposing to convert the duplex into a two-unit condominium to allow for individual ownership of the two units and convert living space within one of the two units into a 800 square feet ADU at 405 Pasadena Court, San Clemente. The standard, the review for this project is the Coastal Act with certified LUP providing guidance. Side please. The project site is located at 405 Pasadena Court in the city of San Clemente, uh, on an inland residential lot. The lot is designated residential medium density in the San Clemente Certified LUP. The surrounding development consists of a mix of single-family and multifamily residences. Slide. In 1964, an approximately 6,500 square feet two-story fiveplex was built on the subject site. Side please, slide three. Right. Okay. So in 1964, an approximately 6,500 square feet two-story fiveplex was built on the site as shown on the upper, um, picture. Three of the five units were 1,253 square feet and the other two were 600 square feet and 1,923 square feet in size. Since the construction of this building, um, the city's zoning code has changed and the building became a legal non-conforming structure. One of the non-conformities was the maximum density regulation, which now allows for one unit per 1,800 square feet of net lot area for a maximum of two residential units on the subject property. In 2017, the city approved a local planning permit for the applicant's request to remodel the pre-existing fiveplex into a two, into a three-story 25-feet-high 6,144-square-feet duplex consistent with the, with the city's current uncertified zoning code, without a condition of approval requiring the applicant to obtain a CDP from the Coastal Commission. The city has submitted a letter explaining that it made an error when approving the project by incorrectly indicating the project was not located in the coastal zone. In 2019, when the applicant submitted a proposal to the city to convert the duplex into a two-unit condominium to allow for individual ownership of the two residential units, the city recognized its mistake made in 2017 and required the applicant to obtain a CDP from the Coastal Commission. Since the conversion of pre-existing fiveplex into a duplex was conducted without benefit of a CDP, the applicant revised the, the current proposal to incorporate the request for after-the-fact authorization for the conversion of a fiveplex into a duplex, as well as the currently proposed two-unit condominium conversion. The applicant also proposed an attached 800-square-feet accessory dwelling unit within the second-floor living space of one of the constructed duplex units. Side please. The primary Coastal Act issues concern the Coastal Act violation consisting of unpermitted conversion of the five residential units to a duplex, as well as the proposed reduction in residential density in an area suitable to accommodate it. The project site is designated in the certified LUP as a residential medium density lot and is allowed a maximum density of 15 units per gross acre or 24 units per net acre based on the gross lot area of 5,783 square feet or 0.13 acres and not layer, and the not net lot area of 5,193 square feet or 0.12 acres for the subject lot. The LUP allows for 1.95 units based on gross floor acre or 2.88 units based on not net acre. The city's uncertified zoning code has a more specific density requirement and allows a maximum of one dwelling unit per 1,800 square feet of net lot area. In this case, applying the city's zoning code would yield a maximum of two dwelling units on the site. Considering the site density limit, the pre-existing fiveplex would be a non-conforming structure as to the certified LUP and the city's current zoning standards. The certified LUP requires new development to meet all current development standards. And because the conversion of a pre-existing fiveplex to a duplex was a new development, the applicant had to meet the current development standard of two maximum dwelling units on the project site. Even if the commission must review after-the-fact projects as it has not been conducted, had this project come before the commission in 2017, the commission likely would have approved the duplex project considering the non-conforming nature of the pre-existing fiveplex with a certified LUP. In addition, the, this project is a very unique case because going forward, the city will not be able to approve projects that demolish more, more residential units than created pursuant to the Housing Crisis Act. Staff also conducted neighborhood research relating to the density of surrounding properties and concluded that this property is the only non-conforming property as to the maximum density requirement within the project vicinity. Accordingly, the ATF conversion from a fiveplex into a duplex in 2017 provided the maximum number of residential units that can feasibly be provided on-site consistent with the city's currently certified LUP and this uncertified zoning code. In addition, the applicant, the applicant proposes to convert 800 square feet of existing living space of one of the two units into an attached ADU as shown in this slide. The proposed ADU will have private entry and an enclosed garage space. The applicant clarified that he can only provide one attached ADU as the state ADU law requires a local government to allow at least one ADU within an existing multifamily dwelling and to allow up to 25% of the existing multifamily dwelling units. Therefore, staff believes that the applicant did provide the maximum number of dwelling units consistent with the LUP and further mitigated the loss of residential units by providing an attached ADU on-site. Staff is recommending special condition one, which requires the applicant to submit revised final plans incorporating two full residential units and an attached ADU on the site and that revised plan be reviewed and approved in concert by the city of San Clemente. Staff is also recommending special condition two, which requires retention of two primary residential units and an attached ADU on-site for the life of the development and prohibition of ingress or egress between the residential units. Side please. As previously described, violations of the Coastal Act have occurred on the property, including the conversion of a pre-existing legal non-conforming five-unit, five-unit residential apartment into a duplex and associated reconstruction of the structure without the benefit of a CDP. In discussions with the applicant, commission staff outlined options for resolving the violations, including obtaining the after-the-fact approval of the unpermitted development, as well as addressing the commission's claims for monetary penalties for this violation and mitigation for, mitigating for temporal impacts resulting from the change in density. The applicant agreed to incorporate a request for after-the-fact approval of reduction of the number of primary units from five to two units and the addition of an ADU. In addition, in order to address the commission's claims for monetary penalties, the applicant has agreed to make a payment of $100,000 to the violation remediation account of the Coastal Conservancy Fund pursuant to special condition three, as shown here. An approval of this application pursuant to the staff recommendation issuance of the permit and the applicant's subsequent performance of the work authorized by this permit in compliance with all the terms and conditions of the permit will result in resolution of the violations. Side please. In closing, staff recommends approval of the application with five special conditions. The motion to achieve this action can be found on page five of the staff report. Staff note that there is an addendum posted to modify one of the staff report exhibits, clarifying the location of the parking garage for the proposed ADU. And this concludes staff presentation. We remain available for questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. Lee. All right. Are there any ex parties on this? All right, I'm gonna open the public hearing and ask whether the applicant is here.
Yes, we have two people signed up as representing the applicant, Tim Pauda and Michael Johnston.
All right. And how much, are you Mr.?
And then you'll need to, uh, turn the mic on by pressing the button. There you go.
Okay, so just if you could state your name and how much time you'd like.
Uh, yes, my name is Tim Payone and I represent the Palkovics on this matter, the, the property owners. And I hope to just take two or three minutes.
Okay.
And the opportunity, if there's a need for any rebuttal to come back up.
Sure. Why don't we give you five minutes? Take three minutes now and if you need a couple more, no problem.
Sure. This very unfortunate situation arose as a result of an error by the city of San Clemente, which they've acknowledged. They've sent a couple of letters to the, the commission and are here today to, uh, further state what happened and that the error is there. But the, the Palkovics understand that there's, that doesn't take a violation away. And we, as a result, we've worked very hard for quite a while now with your staff to try to find a resolution. And part of that resolution was maximizing the number of units that could be, uh, built on the site. And as, as staff has told you, the maximum is two plus an ADU. And that is after, you know, spending a great deal of time, a lot of back and forth on how this works with regard to, you know, density bonus law, state ADU law, all, all kinds of things, as well as the LUP and, uh, the local zoning ordinances. And we understand the LUP's guidance and the standard views Coastal Act. But these were all the, the matters that, uh, came into consideration. I would like to clarify one thing. And this is a result of a discussion Mr. Helbrun and I had this morning. The, this issue came to light as, as, uh, Mr. Lee indicated because, uh, after the structure was built, the Palkovics came back and said, you know, we'd like to divide this legally into two, so perhaps we can sell one of the units. And at that time, the city realized the error that had been made previously. And as Mr. Lee explained, told them they had to come to the, the commission. But the, the limit on the number of units has nothing to do with the subdivision. It's all the LUP and state law and, and local laws. So, um, uh, that's, it's not a subdivision issue that creates the, the limit per se. It enters into the analysis perhaps in the 1,800, uh, square feet, but it's, uh, this is an issue that exists with or without the subdivision. So in the end, we, we concur with the staff report. We're, we're in agreement and we're available for questions that you may have. Thank you.
All right. Great. Thank you. Next speaker.
Did Michael Johnston wish to speak or are you available for questions? And then Andy Hall, was the other speaker.
Is two minutes sufficient?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name is Andy Hall. I'm the city manager for the city of San Clemente. I wish to commend the commission, the commission staff and the applicant for identifying a solution and after fact, after the fact solution for a approval that was granted by the city of San Clemente without the requisite coastal development permit. That won't happen again. Um, we'll be much more careful. But I do stand to support the recommendation of staff on the staff report. While I'm here, I do want to call out one of the commissioners. Commissioner Aguirre spent 10 years trying to coach me on coastal issues. I was a brutally bad student. But I did enjoy my time. And then most importantly, go Padres.
Wow, that was a, what's it called? A double, like, what's it called again? When they do two bases? A double. Okay. You can see my baseball, um, terms are not exactly up to speed. All right. Are there other speakers?
Uh, no other speakers.
Okidok. All right. We'll close, close the public hearing, um, return to staff. Ask if there anything else. Mr. Schwang, Mr. Lee.
I don't think we have anything further other than just to mention that our, um, enforcement staff is also available for questions today.
Okay, thank you. All right. We'll bring it back to the commission for any comments or a motion on this item. Yes, uh, Commissioner Cummings.
Thank you, Chair, and thanks for the work that was done on this, um, to get some level of resolution on this item. I'm a little shocked with the, I was just went on Google Earth and was looking at the site and the proximity to the ocean, the fact that you can see the ocean from, from the property. And then also learning that the coastal zone more or less goes from, you know, mean high tide line to Highway Five. And so it's, it's, it's really a little disturbing that a permit will be given saying that this was outside of the coastal zone. So I'd really commend you all for coming to an agreement, but like even looking at the historic photos, like that's like the example of the type of structure that would have provided low cost and low income, or lower income housing within the coastal zone. So losing that is really troubling and. troubling, and losing those units is really troubling, so I'm happy that we got to some kind of resolution here, but I think we need to figure out how we don't end up in this situation again in the future, because, I mean, for that, I would say for that consulting company or whoever was, whoever was in charge of doing that planning, it's a bit of an embarrassment, I would say, on their part, too, and so my understanding is it wasn't folks in the planning department, it was some outside group that may have made the recommendation, and it'd be good for us just to know, because I would hate for like Santa Cruz or some other jurisdiction to, you know, hire that firm that, you know, it doesn't take the time to really see the impact that they're making, the bad decisions that they're making, but I do want to just, you know, thank the recognition from the city of San Clemente and, you know, thank everyone for trying to figure out a pathway forward in this circumstance, because it wasn't on the fault of the developer, and we appreciate the city, you know, acknowledging the mistake that was made, so just wanted to express that, because we just want to make sure that we're, you know, we're going to, that we're preserving as much affordable housing within the coastal zone as possible, so I'll just end there.
Commissioner Wilson.
Thanks. As, you know, you can guess, my preference is as many units as possible, and I look at when someone says, you know, this is the most possible, when there was two more units before, so it's not, it's not a physical question, it's really a land use planning issue, it's one that has mostly been litigated and dealt with at the legislative level in terms since 2017. I will say that my experience, having been on this board since 2019, is that I would imagine that in 2017, this commission probably would have been okay with that loss of, not okay with it, but would have kind of rolled with it based on the land use designation, you know, the density, and we as a state and even as an organization just were not as well-equipped or educated to the reasons why density was reduced in so many places from multifamily to single-family or even less, and, and, and the, the changes that occurred throughout neighborhoods everywhere that were quite dramatic and very, had negative impacts in terms of affordability. So, that being said, I think that the staff and under this condition, this is as good as it's going to get for this, for this project. As, I'm going to ask for forgiveness before we move forward, but I'm just going to vote no on this one, please do not follow me over the cliff, as I say. I just want one voice to be in, in, in the record that, and to speak to our concerns as a commission in terms of the de-densification and the loss of even more affordable housing, and I don't mean like affordable by the technical term, but I mean, it's just like, these losses have impacts on, on the long-term trajectory, so I will, if it's okay with the rest of the commission, I'll take this for you.
Commissioner, we don't know how people are going to vote, so.
Well, I'm just offering that, and hopefully I'm next to last.
Of course.
Yeah, so anyways, I really do appreciate staff's trajectory or how they got to this place. I wish I had actually voted no on the consent item today as well as one vote, because I just feel like we still need to be standing up for the, where we can affordability within the coastal zone, and I think we get a bad rap and have for a long time, and for not doing, unjustifiably for not standing up for this, but oftentimes it's these legacy land use policies that we are bound to, and what I'm saying is that I think that that legacy land use policy sucks, I'm so happy that the, that the state legislature has sought to address that since 2017, so I don't blame the applicant is what I'm getting at here, and I appreciate the work that they've done working with our staff to get to this place, that's what I'm saying. Thanks.
Thank you. Other?
I have a question. Given that the, under the current land use plan, the density would only allow that it would be legally non-conforming, is, would that be true even in light of the state laws, you know, the change in the state laws that require, that prohibit a reduction in density? How would that work, given those laws?
Well, we did, we did evaluate whether any of those recent changes to state law would apply here and allow us to, you know, require more units, and ultimately concluded that we, this was the maximum we were able to get.
And so even, so even if this had come before us, say this had come before us after the change in the land use plan and after the change in the state law, nevertheless, we could not have required more than the two units plus the ADU? Is that the case? I mean, if this, that's what I'm trying to get at, if this hadn't, had been, you know, come to us while it was still a duplex or a quad.
I think if this item was coming before you at, you know, at the very beginning, where we were looking at a five-plex and they were doing a permit, I think it would be a different situation. I mean, I don't know, we can't say what recommendation we'd have at this point, but that, the fact that a lot of this hall happened before those laws were in place was an important fact in our analysis.
Okay, I'm just wondering how it works now with cities that have this kind of restrictive zoning, but then you have the state overlay, but that's unclear to me, but in this instance, it's irrelevant because of the fact that it was already, okay. All right, well, at this point, there don't appear to be any other questions, so we're looking for a motion on this item, the motion is on page, it's on page five.
I move that the commission approve coastal development permit five dash two-two dash zero-nine-three-eight pursuant to the staff recommendation.
I'll second. All right, with motion and a second, we're going to need a roll call vote, given that we already have, well, I'm sorry. Oh, Commissioner Aguirre, Commissioner Newsome, and then Commissioner Aguirre, and then we'll need a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Cummings.
Aye.
Cummings, yes. Commissioner Escalante, Commissioner Lowenberg.
Yes.
Lowenberg, yes. Commissioner Newsome.
Yes.
Newsome, yes. Commissioner Rice.
Yes.
Rice, yes. Commissioner Uranga.
Aye.
Uranga, yes. Commissioner Wilson.
No.
Wilson, no. Commissioner Aguirre.
Yes.
Aguirre, yes. Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Chair Hart.
Yes.
Hart, yes. The vote is eight, yes, one, no.
All right, thank you very much, and again, I apologize that y'all had to wait for so long because of our technical issues, but that item's concluded at this time. All right, so items twelve C postponed, twelve D has already been voted on consent, as have thirteen A, thirteen B, thirteen point five A, so we are now on item fourteen, the DDR for San Diego coast, Mr. Schwan.
Madam Chair.
Yes, oh, I'm, excuse me.
Before we move on to San Diego.
Report out a closed session, thank you.
Thank you. During the period when we had the technical difficulties, the commission met in closed session, it received litigation and information, it received litigation information and advice and provided direction on Grossman versus Coastal Commission and O'Neill versus Coastal Commission. The commission also received information about several other cases, including Mendocino Railway versus Amesworth, City of Fort Bragg versus Mendocino Railway, State Lands Commission versus Martins Beach One LLC, Citizens Preserving Venice versus Coastal Commission, Coastal Commission versus North County Transit District, and San Mateo County Farm Bureau versus Coastal Commission. The commission also received information about a matter of potential litigation. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I'm sorry, forgot to ask you about that, but appreciate the report out. All right, so now we'll move forward with item fourteen.
Thank you, so item fourteen is the deputy director's report for South Coast District, San Diego Coast District. I'll begin by reporting the issuance of an emergency permit to the San Diego Metropolitan Transit System to implement repairs to a bridge over Choyas Creek that is used by the San Diego Trolley System. Follow-up CDP will address impacts associated with that project. In addition, we're reporting on the issuance of seven waivers and one CDP time extension for projects in Salona Beach, San Diego, and Carlsbad, there haven't been any comments in opposition to those items, so we're asking whether three or more commissioners object to the waivers or the extension in the report.
Thank you, do three or more commissioners object to an item on the deputy director's report? All right, seeing no objection, the commission concurs, and we will move on. Fifteen A and fifteen B have been voted on consent, so the next item will be sixteen A, California Department of Parks and Recreation, Santa Lejos State Beach Revetment.
Thank you, and Alex Yarandi will be doing the staff presentation on this item.
Thank you.
Good day, commissioners. Item six, oh, sorry, there is a slideshow, thank you. Item sixteen A is a request from the California Department of Parks and Recreation to retain an emergency revetment constructed following extreme storm events during the winter of 2022 to 2023 at Santa Lejos State Beach Campground in the city of Encinitas. Upon review of the relevant material, staff is recommending that the commission approve the revetment as conditioned, including a limited five-year authorization to allow State Parks time to complete a long-term coastal hazard analysis and management plan for the park facility. There is an addendum that makes some minor corrections and clarifications to the findings and conditions. State Parks is in support of staff's recommendation. Slide two, please. The emergency revetment that State Parks seeks to retain is located along the bluffs at the southern end of the Santa Lejos Campground, north of the Santa Lejos Lagoon mouth and Cardiff State Beach in Encinitas. In addition to the revetment currently before the commission, State Parks has another application, CDP six dash twenty-four dash oh-four-seven-nine, for retention of a separate one-hundred-ninety-foot-long emergency revetment along the public parking lot at Cardiff State Beach, immediately to the south, shown by the hatch lines. That revetment application is expected to be brought before the commission in November. Slide three, please. Under emergency CDP G six twenty-three zero-zero-two-four, State Parks restacked existing rock that had scattered onto the beach and imported approximately one-thousand-nine-hundred tons of new rock and placed approximately ten-thousand-five-hundred square feet of new cobble to create a two-hundred-forty-foot-long, thirty-foot-wide revetment at the toe of the bluff. Over the years, erosion has led to the collapse and loss of several public campsites in this area of the campground. After the 2022-2023 winter storms, the internal circulation road was at risk, loss of which would lead to the closure of fourteen more campsites due to state fire marshal regulations regarding emergency vehicle access. Slide four, please. As part of its application, State Parks looked at three alternatives and believes that retaining the revetment would preserve the existing public recreational amenities with reasonable maintenance demands, whereas no armoring or softer armoring would lead to continued erosion and loss of campground facilities. The no-armoring alternative would result in the loss of the southern vehicle turnaround and required closure of the fourteen campsites. State Parks also considered cobble and sand, but found it was less durable, required way more maintenance, and the earthen emergency vehicle access ramp would be left vulnerable. Commission staff noted the high volume of use that the campground receives during the year, especially during the summer, and the fact that State Parks is undertaking long-term coastal hazard studies to identify adaptation strategies considering further sea level rise. Commission technical staff determined that the revetment is the smallest and steepest designed to address the erosion risk and limit occupation of each area while giving State Parks the time it needs to complete the studies and return to the commission for a long-term solution. State Parks has previously informed commission staff that they are undertaking these vulnerability assessments here and at other San Diego Coast District coastal park units, but that assessment would take several years to complete for various reasons. However, while reviewing this particular permit, State Parks more recently informed commission staff that due in part to the current fiscal shortfall in the state budget, the sea level rise funding that State Parks had received in fiscal year twenty-one, 2021 to 2022, was identified by the Department of Finance as part of the budget solution to address the fiscal year 2024 to 2025 fiscal shortfalls, and the funding was reverted back to the general fund. Currently, State Parks has stated that no other dedicated funding source is available at this time for sea level rise projects, though is actively investigating alternative funding measures. Special condition number one of the staff recommendation makes clear that this authorization for the revetment and the future measures depend on the submission of a complete long-term analysis. Slide five, please. Special conditions limiting the fiscal and temporal impacts of the revetment include limiting authorization to five years to give State Parks the time needed to conclude its long-term studies, as well as annual monitoring to ensure the revetment does not spread out onto the sandy beach and occupy more recreational space. The placement of community beach monitoring site on the bluff top will help involve the public and State Parks efforts to study coastal hazards here. In conclusion, commission staff recommends approval of this limited-duration permit for the revetment protecting Santa Lejos Campground as conditioned by staff. The motion and resolution can be found on page five of the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Are there any expertises? Right, open the public hearing and ask how many speakers we have.
We have two people who wish to speak, and we also have two more available for questions.
All right, and who is our first speaker?
We have Darren Smith from Parks.
Mr. Smith, you're with California State Parks?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, and how much time?
I have a slideshow, too, if that's a.
Okay, why don't you have, is five minutes sufficient?
Ten, if you got them.
Ten, you can have it, sure.
I can hustle through them.
No, please.
I'm Darren Smith, I'm a senior environmental scientist with San Diego Coast District, California State Parks, I'm also here with Kerry Benner, who's been working on this project actively. First of all, I want to express my appreciation with staff in looking at this problem, it's an incredible amenity that we offer, we have over ten thousand people a year who are using those fourteen campsites that are affected by this, this project, you know, over the five-year term of this permit, you know, that's fifty thousand-plus people that get to spend some time at the beach or living, you know, on the ocean, so anyway, next slide. I just want to kind of set the stage a little bit, you know, for San Diego Coast District, State Parks, sea level rise is kind of an existential problem, I mean, you can see our boundary here, we're the last little strip of public land adjacent to the first public transportation corridor, and you can see we're located in the city of Encinitas, adjacent Santa Lejos Lagoon, where the main connection between the ocean and the lagoon, the inlet runs through Santa Lejos State Beach and Cardiff State Beach. We also support with the Cardiff Living Shoreline, the remnant of the Barrier Beach that was built that supports estuary. Next slide. This is zooming in a little bit on the campground, and you can see that south end there, right next to the bridge where the Santa Lejos inlet mouth is, that area is, you know, was a long time ago, before we acquired, the property was filled on top of that Barrier Beach, so it's very fragile, it's very, it's very loosely consolidated, and, you know, our campground really is sort of a buffer to South Coast Highway one-oh-one, if that part of the campground's lost, Highway one will be threatened immediately and will require some sort of action. Next slide. This is showing our retreat over the past, you know, thirty or forty years, in nineteen-eighty, the bluff, the campground was out to that yellow line at the bottom there, by two thousand and five, we think that, we're not sure who put the revetment in originally, it was likely put in when they built Coast Highway, probably Caltrans or County of San Diego, but that remnant loosely consolidated, unengineered revetment was at that location, we've since retreated it every several years, two thousand and five, we have some photos showing where the rock line was there, and two thousand and twenty-three, that's the current bluff line, and that's where we placed the current emergency revetment. Next slide. So this is showing the situation in two thousand and ten, you can see the rock loosely placed out on the beach, we got a permit in about two thousand and thirteen, I think, to move that rock back up and sort of work with the shoreline, as the shorelines come in, we've pulled our protection closer and closer, and that's where we're at. Next slide. This is another slide showing how dynamic this is, this area isn't, you know, we've constrained the Santa Lejos Lagoon inlet to this one location, it used to have multiple places where it could break through the Barrier Beach, but now with the highway and the campgrounds and everything else, we're, we're limited to this one location, and as recently as 2019, we've worked, the Nature Collective and a whole bunch of other agencies have worked really hard on restoring the Santa Lejos Lagoon, improving its, you know, historic tidal prism, so that there's daily tidal flushing in there, and as you can see from the photo on the right, you know, there was an anticipated. And as you can see from the photo on the right, you know, there was an anticipated amount of energy change there with improving the tidal prism, so a lot more water and velocity is moving in and out of there since then, and that rock was permitted there. There wasn't a similar consideration on the south end of the campground, so that sort of is left exposed to that very dynamic situation, and we're fully supportive of that restoration effort. And, you know, we're an active partner with the Nature Collective. One of the things we like to do is softer engineering solutions. We're sort of limited in this location because it's important to keep that lagoon mouth flowing and the tidal flushing in and out of there, so some softer engineering solutions will be very difficult to implement in this situation. Next slide. Compounded with that effect, over the past three or four years, we've been losing sand in this area, and you can see on the left, this is 23. This is right before the winter storms of 23, the sand elevation. You can see by the height of the ladder on that lifeguard tower on the left thing, typically the sand level is up about halfway up that ladder, so we've really been in a deficit of sand in this location, and that typically would buffer the campground and everything else. Also, you can see in the right, this is from August 2024, the sands finally returned to the beach and really sort of improved conditions there, and will hopefully get us through another winter or two. Next slide. So again, this is the overhead view. This is the emergency revetment that we permitted to the last year, and again, you can see the dynamics of the inlet working there. There's a side channel moving up right alongside the curve of that revetment. Next slide. And this is the current, well, the current and former situation. On the left is shortly after the revetment was placed in, we reopened up the campground, and the sort of perched beach up above the revetment, while the sand still hadn't returned to the site, the public was actively using it, you know, sort of using it as a surrogate beach until the sand returned. And as you can see in the photo to the right, this is just taken last month, and we've had a whole bunch of sand accumulate there, and things are looking good for now. Next slide. So you mentioned before, we've, you know, we were right in place, you know, we really had good, we thought we had really good timing with getting a contract ready, a scope of work, a setup with a consultant to do our adaptation study, to really look hard at this area and see if there wasn't some sort of way to soften some of the effects of the armoring there, or if we could design the armoring in a way that improved public access and those sorts of things. And we were actually funded and ready to go with it, and then we ran into our budget crisis and had that money pulled out. In the meantime, we've been actively looking at a couple different funding sources, and we'll continue to do that and hopefully get back to figuring out how to reconfigure that southern end of the campground, make it so it's less vulnerable and improve public access there. Next slide. And so I'm open for questions. If you guys have any questions regarding this project or following public comment.
Great, thank you so much.
And then our only other speaker was Mitch Silverstein. Then turn the mic back on.
Button? Yeah. Okay. Honorable Chair Hart and commissioners, Mitch Silverstein with Surf Rider Foundation, San Diego County Policy Manager. I think we're all on the same page here. We support the special conditions recommended by staff, especially number one, which requires State Parks to return in five years with a long-term hazard management plan that includes alternatives to armoring. State Parks may decide to apply for a five-year extension. Sounds like there's a lot of funding questions, but I think both the commission and the beach-going public deserve a full reckoning of potential alternatives to continued reliance on armoring that negatively impacts our beaches. I know State Parks is in a tough spot here, trying to preserve campsites at one of the only low-cost, affordable overnight accommodations that we have in San Diego County, the best one in my opinion. And of course, we are highly supportive of the campground. I've stayed there. It's awesome. I'm sure many of you have as well. That said, we do want to see a more balanced adaptation approach and think that five years provides ample time for State Parks to provide it. The reality is that several campsites have already been lost due to erosion, and more will be lost in the future. A balanced approach must take into account the importance of each campsite, but also the importance of preserving the beach itself, which serves the general public in addition to just campground guests. One thing that irked me from the staff report is the assertion from the State Parks Fire Marshal that if the southern roundabout were lost, he would order the closure of 14 southernmost campsites due to lack of emergency vehicle access. I would politely challenge that assertion to justify continued armoring. There's clearly space there to do a realignment of that roundabout in a way that would result in maybe the loss of a few campsites at most. It just sounds like they need the time and the funding to figure that out. So, yeah, we'd just like to see, you know, I think a roundabout realignment that sacrifices minimal sites, but is less reliant on armoring that negatively impacts our beaches, maybe a more sustainable interim solution than that continued escalation of boulders placed on our beach space. We know that we all lose if we keep armoring our beach. So thanks for the opportunity to comment. We look forward to the long-term hazards management plan that evaluates the importance of preserving Santa Lejo State Beach in addition to the campground. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
No other speakers.
All right, bring it back to staff.
Just recognizing the comments made by Surf Rider regarding the alternatives related to the turnaround, that's something that, you know, we're certainly interested in seeing State Parks look into as part of the follow-up to this permit and as part of the long-term planning. So that is our expectation, that they will consider that as one of other, you know, alternatives that they look at.
Okay, so that concludes staff's comments.
That concludes staff's comments.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Gary?
I'm happy to make the motion. I'll just add that, you know, I appreciate staff's work and State Parks, of course, but this is something, as we were talking about this morning, we're going to see more and more challenges related to sea level rise, and our mandate is to protect coastal access, which includes low-cost accommodations like campgrounds and surf points, right? But at the end of the day, this is a hard reality that we're going to have to face, so I strongly encourage us to continue to think outside the box in these next five years when it comes to this particular campground, and, yeah, tough times ahead, so I'm happy to make the motion.
Okay. I have just a couple of questions, and we'll come back to you, Commissioner Gary, Commissioner O'Malley. Did you have questions?
I have just a second.
You were going to second. Okay. So, Mr. Smith, could you come back? Can I ask you what your role is with State Parks?
I'm the Natural Cultural Resources and Planning Manager of the San Diego Coast District.
Great, okay, thank you so much. I'm going to ask you a couple of questions you may or may not be able to answer, but first of all, can you tell me what is, so for this particular campground, how many sites were there originally? I can't quite understand where we are now in terms of how many sites there are now.
I think we're, I want to say 168 to 170 total in the campground.
Initially?
Initially. Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. Add four or five more to that, I think. Over the past 20 years, we've lost four campsites at the bottom, at the bottom of the campground.
So how many are there total now?
I want to say 166, I think 166.
Okay, so it's just the, so the campsites just down by the river are the ones that have been impacted?
Correct, those are the ones that are immediately threatened, yeah.
So then it goes up the highway, I assume, up the beach?
So up, once, the bottom part of the park is the last sort of remnant of the coastal Barrier Beach that's there, the lowest part. As you go further up, the campground's on top of bluff and a little bit more stable rock. I mean, it's eroding at a fairly high rate also, but it's a little different character than the southern end. Southern end are sort of the most prized sites because they're right on the beach, they're right on the water, some of the other ones are up on the bluff up behind.
Yeah, I've been there, I'm familiar with it. I've been there over several years.
I've been there with you.
I think we were together. I was thinking that, that we were together when we did that visit. So the only beach access or the only campsites that have access to a beach are, is this circle at the bottom, right, that's been impacted?
Depending on the sand levels, you know, sometimes, the past few years, we've had very little beach at Santa Lejo. We really lost a lot of sand there, but during good years or better years, when there's more sand there, there's beach all along the base of the bluff, but this is consistently probably the broadest beach of that park, yes.
Yeah, I was, it wasn't that long, because I went there after Cardiff was impacted by the storms to see the, you know, I saw what had happened to Cardiff, and I saw what had happened to Santa Lejo, so I really can't believe the recovery of the beach there.
Yeah, yeah.
That's pretty interesting, and that's with the armoring there on the elbow there of the...
Correct, and part of that, I mean, there's a whole bunch of stuff going on sand stuff, but part of it's, the Santa Lejo Lagoons had a hard time keeping their tidal flushing right now, so that's, you know, it's benefited the beach, but it's impairing the lagoon, so there's some management issues there that's, you know, it's great for us for recreational beach stuff, but it's not so great for the wildlife in the lagoon, so it's very complex, that area.
Yeah, no, I agree with you. And so Cardiff, I know, I recall there was an emergency permit. What is the status over there?
At Cardiff, we are, I think we're on for November for hearing for that emergency permit.
There was an emergency, was there an emergency permit on Cardiff? There was, right?
Yeah, last, from last winter, yeah.
Is that parking lot been rebuilt, or what's the status?
It has been, yeah. It's been restored, it's been open. We were able to open it within three months, I think, of the damage.
And has the beach come back at Cardiff?
Yes, yeah, in a big way.
Oh, hmm, that's interesting. Well, that's all really good news. Just a final question for you. So as you place this revetment, now that we're talking about today, one of the approaches you used is to cover these boulder revetments with sand and native plants. Are you intending to do that here?
I think that's something we really want to look at in the adaptation plan, as quick as possible. I mean, luckily, we have a good partner with the Nature Collective, and when they do the inlet maintenance, we have sand available to do things like that on a limited basis. And I think that's something we look into as long-term, if we were to do some armoring, you're really looking at ways to make it so it's more accessible, so there's, you know, some maybe biological value or at least aesthetic value to it. So I think that's one of the things, you know, we're sort of thinking about as we look for alternatives to what we have there now.
Yeah, I mean, from my perspective, as we look to approve this particular project today, I mean, I'm not, since it will be there for five, you have a five-year term that it could be there, I'm not sure what, seems to me that if State Parks determined that that was an approach, that they could at least try, that that would be within the permit to include that or not? If they decided to do that approach with sand and native plants, within the five-year period?
We would, no, it's not a part of the existing approval as being proposed, but we could look at amendment to do that.
So if they wanted to do that, they could come back sooner than, yes, sooner than the five-year, okay.
I mean, I think we really want to set this up with a really pretty well-thought-out adaptation plan, where we have some ideas on, you know, looking at all sorts of possibilities. I mean, Mitch mentioned the turnaround, I mean, that's an obvious one, that needs to be redone and figured out, and just looking at ways to do this. I mean, we've thought about all sorts of things, but I saw some study about lily pads and revetments, where you can actually provide sort of stepping stones and make access better and things like that.
Yeah.
We really want to explore those things real thoroughly, you know, with the assistance of a coastal engineer, see what's possible.
Right. Well, thanks so much for those comments. Those are all the questions I have. I just have a couple of comments, and those really go to the extreme need for State Parks to complete, to begin really, beyond San Diego coast, and to look at sea level rise vulnerability and adaptation throughout the system. Our state park system is a third of the California coast. It is an absolute environmental justice issue to be losing our state parks at the rate that we are. Santa Lejo is, as has been mentioned, is such an important, low-cost, visitor-serving location for folks, and it's just one of many that are threatened up and down the coast. I, you know, I compare the progress that Caltrans has made, and Commissioner Williams is here, I don't know if he cares to speak to that, but my understanding is they're on the second round of a statewide vulnerability process for Caltrans and the coastal zone, and to me, those things go hand in hand, because you look at Santa Lejo or all of these parks, you know, what Caltrans is doing to adapt to sea level rise, it should be done in coordination, it seems to me, with State Parks, where, you know, where Caltrans determines that they need to move back, they need to retreat, or they need to construct a bridge, like they did in Sonoma County at Gleason. These are partnerships that are so essential, so to have one partner moving forward in the same way that Caltrans is, and not have the other partner having either the resources or, for whatever reason, not moving forward with a vulnerability study, it's, I just, you know, it's just very bothersome from my perspective. And then this morning, we had a LCP, we funded two LCP update plans for Morro Bay and Monterey. In Morro Bay, we heard, I don't know if you were here this morning, but you have two campgrounds in Morro Bay, one on each side of where the LCP planning is going on, and those state park beaches are not even included in the planning for the LCP update, even though they're right on the bay. It doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I just think it's so important for State Parks to see where these opportunities are for funding when there's an LCP update, where Caltrans is doing their planning, and move forward in whatever way they can, because these are such complex and difficult issues. So I really appreciate you, Mr. Smith, for your work down here in San Diego, and I just hope that we see more of that up and down the state. So on that note, I'll turn to Commissioner Gary, unless, Mr. Williams, do you have any, Commissioner Williams, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, this is obviously very complex, and, you know, we're all walking and chewing gum at the same time. You know, we do have some statewide, you know, vulnerability assessments that we have worked on, but it still hasn't really trickled down to the project level to where we want it to be yet, and so I think State Parks is in a similar situation where we've come before the commission several times, at least Caltrans has, where, you know, we have projects that are kind of emergency projects, where, you know, we are doing something similar to what they're doing here, and then we are coming back with a follow-up permit for a long-term solution. Ultimately, what we're hoping to do is, which I would imagine Parks is probably going to do the same, is we have kind of a statewide perspective, and then we're drilling down to the district level, and then we're drilling down to the corridor level, where we have some specific plans or ideas on kind of how to approach and understanding all the different resources within that particular corridor. And so over the long term here, we're getting more data, more information, and we have districts that are working on corridor-level planning to where, so hopefully, the goal would be that when we do have an emergency situation, we'll know what that long-term plan is for that particular corridor, and then we can start to work towards that with, you know, through the permitting process and whatnot.
Is there any state-level coordinated agency sea level rise vulnerability approach where Caltrans and State Parks and any other public landholder along the coast, you know, that are working together so that when they have projects, would that be you, Commissioner Eckhart Lee?
That might be more of a gin question.
Yeah.
But I will say, though, with our updated vulnerability and risk assessment for our system, that should be at a point here in the next, what did I note? Sometime in 2025, we'll be actually reaching out to State Parks and the Coastal Commission to coordinate on our information and try to do some collaboration there, so we're looking forward to that.
Great. Commissioner Eckhart.
Thank you for kicking that to me. I'll just add that the state has a sea level rise leadership team that was actually catalyzed by several commissioners to really do exactly what you're saying, Chair Hart, to coordinate and align the sea level rise activities of state agencies to find those opportunities for leveraging and sharing resources, and so I think we can use that group to kind of try to figure out where these opportunities are. So I'll be taking this back to my team to figure out how we best do that. So thanks for that suggestion.
Yeah, I was part of that group that met, it's been a few years, and it would be great, you know, sometimes things just need to be jump-started, and you take a project like this, that, I mean, this is such a difficult, complex project, but I just think that State Parks is hearing this very strong desire to work together, and that includes the commission, of course, and the Coastal Conservancy, which I also sit on, to really move forward to protect our state parks and look at how we can adapt to sea level rise. Commissioner Gary?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the commission approve coastal development permit six dash twenty-three dash zero five three, sorry, three eight. Pursuant to the staff recommendation, I recommend a yes vote.
All right, we have a second.
Second.
No, I think Commissioner O'Malley is already, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. All right, is there any objection to a consensus, is there a consensus, excuse me, for unanimous approval of this item? All right, seeing no objection, this item is approved. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Mr. Smith. All right, where are we now?
Six.
Okay, we'll move to the statewide item, approval of minutes. Do we just need a motion on this?
I'll move.
All right, Commissioner Cummings, motion. Commissioner Gary, second, or vice versa, and we'll call it that way. Any objection to unanimous approval? Seeing none, minutes are approved. Are there any other reports?
I have one.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yeah, I was going to mention this earlier, but didn't have, didn't chime in quick enough, but I did want to just let the commission and the community know that in Santa Cruz, that we had a tobacco waste subcommittee that had been working for the past 16 months on bringing forward a policy to address tobacco waste. Yesterday, the Santa Cruz Board of Supervisors unanimously approved banning the sale of filtered tobacco products in Santa Cruz County to help reduce tobacco waste litter and particular cigarette butts. And so hopefully, we get another, we get two more cities on board because there was some concern that we would be isolated on our own within the county, and we think we'll have the support from some of the other jurisdictions, but just hope that in doing so, because we'll be the first county in the, I think, the United States to move forward with such a ban, that other coastal communities and maybe the state will move forward, because there have been four attempts by Mark Stone at the state level, they all failed, and so we thought the local level would be a good, a good place to start. And so hopefully, this will cascade across the state and will help reduce tobacco litter through getting rid of cigarette butts.
I read that, and it's just incredible, and thank you so much. So awesome. Fantastic, and thank you so much for your report. Commissioner Gary, did you, are there any other reports? All right, seeing none, the meeting is adjourned for today, and we'll see everybody back here tomorrow morning at nine, and I know we're not going to have any technical difficulties tomorrow.